Call the meeting to order for September 26, 2017 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Hurdman has an excused absence.
Thank you. Onto current business. Any questions from the dais on consent calendar? Seeing none. Item number two, we have a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. George Murdock with Municipal Operations. I'm here also with Peter Tauscher. He's our senior civil engineer, our streetlight guru, and he also represents you in our energy partnership. So I thought before we got to the presentation from Edison about the partnership, I'd tell you a little bit about what it is and what our energy goals have been. You know, it's been our goal from day one to be sustainable, to reduce energy usage citywide, and of course, compliance with AB 32, reducing emissions. This all follows our Energy Action Plan, which was done in 2013. And then, of course, as part of the component was to do community outreach and energy awareness for our community. The Orange County, the city has been a member of the Orange County City Energy Leadership Partnership, I know that's a mouthful, so we'll just call it the Partnership, since 2011. And what the Partnership does is it provides financial and technical support to the city in the way of incentives, studies, feasibility studies. Members include, of course, the Southern California Edison, Southern California Gas, and then seven cities, including Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach, Ravine Santa Ana, and Westminster. So this partnership has worked really well since 2011. There are certain levels that you can achieve over a period of time. It's a performance-based partnership where it includes the valued partnership or just being a member, and then, of course, you can escalate to silver, gold, and platinum, depending on how much energy you save city or agency-wide. There is some efficiency criteria that's required in, as you move up each level. Those include looking at all the city facilities, which we have done, the public outreach, of course, component, and then saving or reducing your energy usage up to 20%. There's a demand response program, so everybody is probably aware of that. If you've got the flex alert or critical peak pricing alerts when, in the middle of summer, when energy is really low. So the city also participates in that, and we have a slide on that. Some notable projects that have happened since 2011, of course, the water facilities were changed out into a variable frequency drive. It's really the motors and operators that run our water stations, where we saved about 1.7 million kilowatt-hours in energy just by converting those out. The second largest project was our streetlight LED conversion, which Peter's going to talk about in the next presentation, where we saved about 1.1 million kilowatt-hours. Another big, it was a big project. And, of course, Civic Center, Marina Park, all the great work that our Public Works folks do for savings by design and the conversions of any of our other facilities, miscellaneous projects like direct install means converting street, you know, any of the light bulbs and the fixtures, and HVAC, which is the air conditioning and heating units. So this is the top five. There's been dozens of projects that Public Works and others have done to reduce energy citywide. The demand response component, this is just something we thought you would tell you about. So again, when you get that critical peak pricing or demand response call from Edison, the city participates in reducing energy primarily using our water facilities. It gives us a little flexibility that if we can, we shed some electrical load by shutting down some water pumps. The bottom box shows a partnership that we have with Inernoc. It's an agreement that we have with them, where we've committed energy that we can reduce during these critical events. Since 2011, we've performed very well. I know the chart's a little hard to read, but the little orange sections underneath the line are areas where we couldn't. You could see in the drought, we had a tough time reducing energy by shutting down pumps because, well, they weren't simply running. So, but anyways, over a period of time, we've saved about, or we've received about $140,000 in incentives to reduce energy. So it just shows our part that the city's reducing where they can. So with all that said, so over the last several years, we're proud to announce that the city's achieved the platinum level. So that's the highest level. The total energy savings is about four million kilowatt-hours. If, to put that into simpler terms, it's equal to powering about 329 homes for a year, reducing 3,051 metric tons of carbon dioxide, or equal to removing 653 cars driven for one year. So it's a significant amount of reduction. The incentives received from Edison, and this really goes to the thanks of the Partnership, the Partnership people that have lead it, which is Peter Tauscher now. You may remember Iris Lee, who was the energy champion before Peter. Public Works has done a lot of work into identifying these projects, applying for incentives, and pushing these projects through. But I also want to say that it's been a citywide effort from police, fire, recreation, everybody who's done energy projects, so all cumulatively, and also the public. So some of the savings that we have received is from the public and the energy that they've cut back. So this reward, or this award is really shared by everyone. So there's 21 platinum-level cities in the Edison Territory. The city of Newport Beach and Huntington Beach is one of two in the Orange County City Energy Partnership here. So what's next? A lot of people say, well, now that you've done all these things, what, you know, is there anything more to look at? Peter will talk a little bit about streetlights and where we want to go. For us, we'll be updating the Energy Action Plan, of course, to look at potential savings. And then efficiency, so we'll continue with our LED replacements and facility upgrades. But then there's a new thing about renewables. I know everybody's heard about it, but there's some opportunities for solar panels at some of our corp yards and other areas, battery banking. There's an opportunity where we can buy and store power during the off-peak periods and then shave our peak times during, the peak times are going to change from 4:00 to 9:00 PM here shortly. So there's some opportunities there. And hydraulic generation is just a way of using our water system to generate electricity through pressure-reducing valves. So we're doing two studies through the ones that are on your slide, Optera and Entricity are two free studies that are currently underway, just to see if those are feasible. So we are working on other energy projects. So without further ado, and before receiving your award, I want to say a couple of special thanks here. None of this could have been possible, of course, without Southern California Edison, the gas company who's a partner in the partnership. FCI Management was our technical advisor, Sheila Reed, she's not here this evening, but she, they provide a lot of the technical support. The Energy Coalition, Rebecca Hauser, is here. They helped a lot with a lot of the feasibility studies. Again, all this was done at no cost to the city. And then, of course, thanking you, the City Council, for approving these great projects that we've done over the years. And, of course, we couldn't do any of this without the Public Works staff for constructing these things. My staff for, you know, operating the demand response programs and coming up with some of the crazy ideas about pumps. But with that, I'd like to introduce Tammy Tran. She's with Government Affairs with Southern California Edison. And Tina Velure, our account manager, to present you with the platinum-level award.
Thank you. And, of course, a big thank you goes to you, Mr. Murdock.
Thank you. If it pleases the council, we have two presentations for the photo op, if you wouldn't mind waiting until after the second one, so it saves you a trip down.
We're all about efficiency.
Good afternoon. My name's Tina Velure. I'm the account manager at Southern California Edison for the city of Newport Beach. And along with Tammy Tran, we'd like to thank the city of Newport Beach for being a valued and really excellent partner with utility. George and Peter have just showed tremendous support. I want to thank them for being just really the energy champions for the city, push these projects along. And with their hard-earned help, we are presenting the city with the platinum level plaque. That is the highest level in our partnership. So that's quite a large achievement. Not many cities do it. As George mentioned, it's only the second city in the Orange County Partnership and the 21st city in all of SCE territory. So that's excellent, and we really applaud the city for doing great work that you have done here. Thank you.
That is excellent. Thank you for coming to present it. I'll be down. One more item?
Yeah, maybe after the next one, we have the check presentation and saves you a trip down.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we're going to be a similar presentation made by Peter Tauscher.
Counsel and resident guests, thank you for letting us present today the LED streetlight replacement program during study session. The city owns, just some background on the streetlights, we own about 6,000 streetlights throughout the city. We maintain and operate all those streetlights. In 2016, council approved about to change over, throughout 3,000 streetlights of our Cobra heads-type streetlights to LED fixtures. The project saved, had several savings and benefits to the city, including reduced-cost utility bills, less work on the streetlights, and efficiency lighting for overall throughout the city. Project cost was about $1.1 million. Half of it was paid through incentives received back from SCE. The other half came, we used on-bill financing with the zero percent loan interest, and we paid just through on-bill financing. The schedule for that was to do all this work was last January, we received authorization from council to move forward with incentive applications, and we began installations in May and finished installations of 3,000 streetlights, over 3,000 streetlights in December of this year. And from that time to now, it took, SCE and I and the city, we worked through to make sure all the streetlights were installed correctly in the waterages that we specified in the contract. What's next for the city? We still have several streetlights to do. Most of them are the post-op lights, the ones we see in the lower right-hand corner down there that we see on Spyglass or in Harbor Ridge or on the peninsula in Balboa Island. There are different type of streetlights that are different than the ones with the 3,000 we did. We have about 2,000 of these streetlights we're going to be doing over the next year, along with all of our parking lights. These will go on for the next year. And we also are doing series conversion. This year, we're doing two-circuit series conversion in East Bluff at about 116 lights, and then we have about 491 lights left after, after this year, we'll have about 350 left. But after that, we'll be doing some ballards throughout the city. This picture shows the Phase 1 of the Cobra heads, the 3,000 Cobra heads that we did last year. All the blue are the Cobra heads, and the red are the post-op lights we'll be doing over the next year. This doesn't include all of the other LED conversions that we did over in West Cliff and other areas throughout the city that also have LED conversion. Now, we'd like to, once again, thank SCE for providing the incentives and our goals to help us with these conversions, and throughout the city to keep helping us with this with our partnership. Special thanks not only to SCE, but also to FCI Management, the Energy Coalition. And I think Energy Coalition, Rebecca Hauser has a couple of words she'd like to say also regarding our coalition and the projects we've done.
Hi, welcome.
Hi. Thank you, Peter, honorable councilmembers, and Mayor Muldoon. On behalf of the Energy Network, I'm thrilled that we've been able to support the city of Newport Beach with this impressive streetlight project. Most public agencies in Southern California recognize the value of energy efficiency, but completing projects can be a daunting task. The Energy Network is proud to have supported this project, and we commend the city and its leaders for joining us and making an impact. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. And I would like to say Rebecca's been instrumental in all these projects, helping us get through, do all the paperwork and getting all the numbers and submitting everything to SCE and working with SCE in a timely manner so we can get these projects done efficiently. Without her, I don't think we could have got this done as fast as we could have. It's been great help having, working with her. I also like to thank the City Council for providing funding and have the foresight to see, to make sure that we can get these projects done. I think they are important for the city to get this down, the LEDs. Also, all the staff, not just Public Works, but all through, as George mentioned, MODs, instrumental, recreations also help, PD, they've all come in and helped, provided resources and aid, and wherever we could, they've always been there to help out, were training or whatever they needed for their projects or facilities. At this time, I'd like to present the council with our latest incentive check for the 3,000 streetlights.
Oh, one second. We'll do some quick questions from the dais. First off, thank you, Mr. Tauscher, in leading this and for the report. We have a comment from Councilman O'Neill.
Yeah, real quick, just wanted to say thank you. I know this has been an enormous deal up in Spyglass in particular, and I'm looking forward to Phase 2, because not only does frankly this make the community and the streets itself look much nicer, but this acts as a crime deterrent, given the wider swath and brighter light that we have along our streets without leaking into people's homes. So I just wanted to say thank you.
I have received a few calls from up from your area about wanting the LEDs, and we were kind of waiting for it to happen, to finish this project so we could dovetail it into the next one, so.
One of those calls might have been me.
Might have been you.
Okay. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to commend staff and our public partners, the gas company in Edison, and even the energy project. Really is a wonderful project of all of these organizations, public and private, coming together to keep the lights on in the city in the most efficient way possible. We had, Public Works had a presentation at my town hall last week about the crosswalk study, and part of crosswalk safety is really enhanced through the new streetlight program on the peninsula. And so we're seeing the direct tie-in, and I just want to commend staff for their leadership in seizing the moment and seizing the opportunity to partner with utilities and get some co-funding that helps to facilitate it. And I know that takes a lot of time, and I appreciate, George. You will be missed. Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you.
Tauscher. You have the big check.
Again, this is Tammy Tran, Government Affairs, and Tina Velure.
Really fun big check to show you the incentives that city of Newport Beach has been awarded, $469,000, almost a half a million dollars, and with these current streetlight projects saving almost a million kilowatt-hours, which is a huge achievement for the city. And I commend your staff for doing it in really record time. It's difficult to get through these processes and to have them installed. They look great, and they were installed just the most efficient. Congratulations to the city. And again, we just want to commend the city staff because it really takes the effort of staff to make these things happen. Just to reiterate what Councilwoman Dixon said, it is a private partner, private-public partnership, and those are the opportunities that we look forward to continuing to work with the city in the future, especially as we achieve more energy efficiency and clean energy. So we look forward to that, and we'd love to take a photo with you so that we can commemorate this occasion. Thank you. Getting closer?
Mr. Mayor, might I speak to that? If you think back, you will remember perhaps that Winkin', Blinkin', and Nod one night sailed off in a wooden shoe, sailed on a river of crystal light into a sea of dew. A river of crystal light. Those LEDs we've installed in all the streets are crystals. Our streets are all rivers of crystal light. What a nice poetic city you've given us.
Oh, thanks, Alan. Please hold the applause. Our noble laureate is a humble man. Mr. Kiff, are you ready?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers and members of the audience, I'm going to give a presentation about John Wayne Airport and NextGen. And this is a complex subject. It takes a lot of understanding, which I know everyone in the room will get, but the short, my short request is to stop me if I've said something that sounds confusing and/or if I've used an acronym that doesn't make any sense. And I will, I would like the council to interrupt me as I go on, because otherwise you have to listen to me drone on for quite some time, because I want to provide some background here, so please feel free to interrupt me. I do have some natural breaks, but break it up otherwise. So John Wayne Airport and NextGen. And I'm going to start with the city's overall goals that are generally about the airport, but also about NextGen. And first is in bold, to protect our quality of life. No exception, period. That's the most important goal we have. Part of that is protecting the settlement agreement. Another, as we get more closer to NextGen, is to get flights down the center of the Upper Bay. We'll continue to pursue litigation with the FAA. We're one of just a very few cities across the country that actually sued the FAA just for NextGen. That was in October '16. I'll have some slides about that. We do, we also want to take a new look at noise and altitudes. We want to involve the community more. One of the things that, looking back, has been so important to the airport's containment in our areas is that we work together. We work together with our community. We work together with our community groups like Airport Working Group and SPON and Airfare, and that we then go with a united front to the county and to the FAA to get the changes we want, and we have a history of that. It's very important. Another thing I want to facilitate is having everybody get their appropriate complaints to the FAA. Not easy to do, not easy at all. In fact, it's a, they want you to mail them, not email them, snail mail them. So we're going to help you do that. And then the other is to follow our airport policy. So let me get into this. So what is NextGen? NextGen stands for next generation, as you might imagine. It's an FAA modernization program, which if you were sitting in the same room two years ago, you would have heard us say, because I was looking back at my notes, it was October of 2015, "We object to this. This is bad for Newport Beach. NextGen is bad for Newport Beach." It is happening nationwide. There's a term that you'll see that I'll use again called area navigation, or ARNAV, and it means basically less fanning, less variation, and more narrowing. And per the FAA, the reason for NextGen nationwide is more safety, predictability, repeatability, and efficiency. That's what the FAA would tell you. We're one of 21 airports with changes just in Southern California. This is kind of a picture of what NextGen looks like. This happens to be Reagan National in Washington. This is before. This is after. So what they're trying to do again is limit all that fanning and narrow it down more precise. This happens to be arrival patterns. The arrival patterns are affected as well as departure patterns. But that's basically a picture of what NextGen is, before, after. Some common questions that we get about this that I'm going to answer, talking about the current NextGen routes that have been applied to John Wayne. When do they change? Why do they change? How fast can the problems be fixed with them? Can they be fixed? What's with what I call the two-turn procedure? It's called the STAY, S-T-A-Y-Y. Let me back up just a tiny bit. These are funny names. What's Piggin? What's Hero? What's Fins? These are the names that the FAA assigns to the departure paths. They have no rhyme or reason to me. I imagine they do to the FAA, but, so you'll hear me jump into that jargon there and talk about each one of these routes. So when I say that name, it's the name of a departure route. We're going to talk about noise and noise abatement. Are the typical John Wayne Airport noise abatement departure procedures, is it used anymore? If not, why not? Are the new routes hitting where they're supposed to hit? And do we know that our noise monitoring system, in this case, the county's noise monitoring system, is accurate? Why do we file suit? And can things be sped up and how? Got to talk about the settlement agreement. It's unique in the nation, and that's part of why Newport Beach has been protected, but it's also always under siege. It was under siege since it started back in 1985. In 1990, the US Congress enacted what's called the Airport Noise and Capacity Act, or ANCA. I'm going to refer to ANCA a couple of times. ANCA basically said that no other entity can do what John, what the city of Newport Beach and Airport Working Group and SPON and the county did in Orange County, California, because it precluded settlement agreements like this, which have any way of, which in any way limit the noise or limit the capacity. Again, the N and the C in ANCA is noise and capacity of an airport. The FAA and the Congress said, no more. Now, we grandfathered in under ANCA. The settlement agreement and its extensions continue to be protected, but ANCA really changed the game, just like our settlement agreement changed the game five years before. Just a reminder of what's in it, there's a curfew. The curfew cannot be changed through 2035. If you're a commercial carrier, you can schedule the departure between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, 8:00 AM on Sundays. People in Newport know this very well. There's no arrivals after 11:00. There's a cap on passengers. Right now, it's 10.8 million annual passengers through 2020. Then it goes up. It goes up to 11.8, and then 12.2 or 12.5 by 2026.
Dave?
Yes?
I believe that when they land, they don't make as much noise, however if they come from another direction, it could lead to others to think they're taking off. Could you explain that?
Sure. As Newporters know, in a Santa Ana wind condition, we get an arrival pattern versus the departure pattern. I had a lady emailing me just Sunday night, the last hour between 10:00 and 11:00, John Wayne Airport flipped the arrivals, and we were getting arrivals for that period of time. And to this lady, it sounded like a departure, because they follow a different route. They come straight into the runway. So it is a different noise. It's a, it can be loud depending on where you are. The plane is clearly in descent mode, so it's not powering up. So it is definitely a different noise. That answer your question?
Yep.
Okay. There's also a cap on the loudest commercial flights per day, and I'm not going to get too much into jargon, but we call these Class A flights. These are the loudest flights. There are 85 of those that can depart on an average basis, any one day. This number goes to 95 in 2021. There are also noise limits, and importantly, these were first set in 1985. And if you remember back to 1985, the quietest plane at the time was the McDonnell Douglas 80, the MD-80, and that would be one of the loudest planes in the fleet today. It's not even used at John Wayne Airport. So our noise standards are based on a 1985 MD-80. And they're set at each of 10 noise monitoring stations. I'm going to talk mostly about seven of them, just on the departure corridor. The noise limits for the louder planes are different from noise limits for the non-loud planes, otherwise known as Class E. And these are actually in the settlement agreement. The decibel levels are in the settlement agreement. So getting now to ARNAV, and again, that stands for area navigation. And I know this is kind of hard to see because it's a picture, but you could see, this was the, more the days of fanning, between here and here, on the peninsula and the island, that's about eight tenths of a mile wide. And that was what I'd call the sharing the pain system, where the planes didn't all go down one specific route. And I think generally Newport was okay with this. So what changed, though, this is kind of what the top end of that looks like under these three new departure patterns called the Piggin', the Hero, and the Fins. You do see a narrowing. It's not a narrow, precise line, though, because there's still pilot discretion, there's still wind, there's still different things that happen in the departure. But basically, it's narrowed the line. And you could see, in some cases, there's some over East Bluff, there's some over West Cliff, all kind of centered down on what Newport Dunes and then Balboa Island. So I'm going to talk about what happened specifically with NextGen at John Wayne Airport. Here's, this is going to be my base map. Hopefully, everyone can see that. I'm going to focus primarily on the Upper Bay. This is what I'd call the optimal departure pattern. You basically leave the runway about the Salt Dyke in the upper Newport Bay, you make a turn, and that heading, that has a specific heading. You go over the STAR area, which is noise monitoring station number seven, and it's also seven, and it's also called towing. So, that's another—the—those are one in the same. But anyway, noise monitoring station is NMS number seven. That's the last monitoring station. Basically, this is the path that we think planes should be going down if planes were going down a repeated path. So, before 2009, I'm going to call this the fanning period, where we shared the pain. And these are my graphics. They're not the FAA's graphics, they're not the county's. So, they're—they're exaggerated in some cases, but I just want to get everybody the picture of what happened. So, pre-2009, fanning, shared pain. So, in 2009, in 2010, we had our first ARNAV route, or area navigation route, and it was called the Duke I, and it was a mistake from day one. And those of you who lived in East Bluff or Corona del Mar will remember that, that it started—it—it basically started to take that yellow line, and it was for 50% of the departures. Everything going east. So, Dallas, Chicago, Denver, Newark, those were planes taking the Duke I. So, we went to the FAA with the community and said, "You got it wrong," with the county, too. They tried to fix it with Duke II, and they didn't get that right either. So, this is now—this is probably a year of living with Duke I and Duke II, for those that remember that. And you could see, the other 50% are still taking that fanning, those—those blue lines. So, then in March of 2011, a full 18 months after Duke I, they fixed it, and they called this the Strel. And the Strel, again, arguably fixed Duke's problems, and that we went into a period between 2011 and '14 of some narrowing. So, we had some conventional SIDS, and that stands for standard instrument departure. They're called the Mussel and the Channel. Again, a couple of funny names. And then we had one advanced departure, and that was now called the Strel. So, 50% of all of them were going down this advanced departure. It was pretty good, it was working out pretty well, and then the other 50% were fanned. So, in 2014—I'm saying ish—there was an error made involving how the magnetic variation of the North Pole works and how it's translated onto aviation plates, and the Strel got messed up. So, that yellow line—I'm going to bounce back and forth, see where the yellow line was before. The yellow line went way west, and it was affecting West Cliff and Dover Shores, and it was missing the STAR. It was missing towing. So, see how that was—again, this is my crude approximation of what happened. But basically, the west was getting hammered, and the east, though, got kind of a little break there, because half of the flights were now pushed further west than they ordinarily would be. And the FAA tried to fix it. We had meetings here to try to fix it. Was never quite right. The FAA eventually said, "Just wait until 2017, and wait till Metroplex, and Metroplex will fix it." So, here we get into 2017. March arrives, and a flight path called the PIGGON arrives. I'm going to bop back and forth again. See what happens to the yellow line. The yellow line is west of the STAR, and now it goes too far east of the STAR. So, the Strel is now gone, and this is called the PIGGON, P-I-G-G-N, and the Mussel and the Channel are still there. We still have those flights kind of wandering over the west side more sporadically, but now the PIGGON has been established, and we think it's wrong. So, that's March of 2017. April 2017 arrives. Now, you see, my—my blue lines go away, and everything starts to narrow over the wrong PIGGON, and that's the HERO and the FINS. And now, these are flights going to the Bay Area now, Seattle, Portland, Salt Lake City, Las Vegas. Those are all—all those flights that were conventional standard departures now went away, and they're all on this area navigation, and it's the wrong one. And we're watching this with the FAA. We're telling them we're concerned. I'm starting to get calls from East Bluff saying, "Something's different. What's going on?" And again, this is the FAA that did this. Wasn't the city. So, I'm going to jump to the end of May. Things are happening pretty fast. A month later, the FAA adjusts the PIGGON, and it goes back, and it's better. So, it's gone back. It's gone back towards the STAR. I left the STAR off on this one, but you could see it's pretty close to it. But it leaves the HERO and the FINS where they are, too far east. So, this is where we are today. We're still there. The FINS and the HERO aren't quite right. The PIGGON, when it's flown right, is probably okay. And I know that's a hard thing for folks on the west side to see, but they do it—it does appear to be going over noise monitor station seven. It does appear to have the right turn. Sure, some pilots will wait too long to turn, and they'll go over the western side, and I get that and respect that. But the—if someone's flying the pure route, it looks pretty good. But the FINS and the HERO, 50% of the flights, too far east. So, does anybody have any questions about what I've said so far on the council? Because I'm going to jump to what's next now. Mr. Pieter?
You identified the three different flight paths, but you didn't really indicate why the FAA put in these new ones in May or April, and why they moved them the way they did. Maybe you can't second guess they're moving them, but why do we have three, and why do they keep moving them around?
Those are great questions, and I don't have the answer to them. I wish I knew more about what the FAA thinks. They do talk to us, but they're working with 21 other airports, and I—we don't always get an answer that makes a lot of sense to me, and I'm a layperson. We'll talk a little bit more about what's next, though, because that may help answer your question, Mr. Pieter.
Questions from the audience will be taken after the time for public comment, and the Councilwoman Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Dave, these changes that the flight paths have taken over the last couple of years, would you say that the FAA has been listening to the city? Would they be changing and making these adjustments if you and others had not been representing the issues? Or how do these—how do they react? What makes them move?
I think generally, they—they have been responsive to us. They are very methodical, AKA slow. It takes—a—it takes them a very long time to study a route, and arguably, that can be good, certainly in terms of safety. But it—they study a route, they notice if something's wrong, they'll develop a correction, they'll print the correction. And when I say print, meaning they'll post it to navigational sites, and then they'll wait and say, "You know, this change is going to be implemented in three months," and they'll pick a date. But for the—for the person at home who's listening to that going over their heads, who doesn't see an end, that can be very frustrating, and I get that. I understand that.
So, as we go forward, and it really helps me to understand that this has been a continuous adjustment, maybe a little bit over here affects people over here negatively, a little bit over here affects people. So, it's—it's—the pain is being spread out, but I don't know if I'm heartened by that, but at least FAA does seem to respond. We may not always agree, but at least you have a good relationship with the city. They seem to listen to the city, I think.
In part because of your litigation.
And that helps. It's a little bit of leverage that we may have. On the noise monitors, just to clarify my own understanding, so the noise levels were established in 1985 with the settlement agreement?
That's correct. They—they have been modified through microphone checks and microphone verifications, but basically, they were set in 1985.
Based on noise levels of louder airplanes at that period of time? Just as you said, the MD-80 is no longer—
That's right, but—but less frequent. I think the—the airport was not as busy in 1985, so—
Well, I guess I'm just wondering, is that—is there certainly since 1985, better technology from a noise monitoring situation? Is that something that we should be speaking with FAA about, to be calibrating it more precisely?
So, the—the county calibrates it very precisely, and every year, they recheck it, and the next check is coming up—actually, I'm going to talk about noise in about—in a couple of minutes if—
All right. No, that's fine.
I'll try to answer that question.
Okay.
So, I'm going to move to what's coming. So, what's coming? On October 12th, there'll be an adjustment to the HERO. So, that's 40%, about 40% of the flights. I didn't change the map, because I don't know what the adjustment's going to look like. I've seen the plates. It—it's hard to tell. Even our experts are a little bit confused as to what's coming, but there is an adjustment coming. There was an adjustment in March to FINS—sorry—to PIGGON. I—I think it's going to be a similar adjustment. We may see a movement. We may also—we know at the end of December—sorry, December 7th, there'll also be an adjustment to FINS. So, we're going to be watching those dates very closely. We'll be out there watching the planes to see what's going on. Also in December—and this is my crude drawing of it—the FAA may introduce what's called the STAY, and that is a—it's a required navigation performance departure. Again, sorry for the jargon, or RNP, which basically would be the first one used in the United States, and it would be at John Wayne Airport. And basically, it's something the city talked about probably four years ago, when the city said, "Is there a way a plane could navigate through the curves of the Upper Bay without affecting the east side or the west side in a negative way?" And the FAA, four years ago, said, "No, we don't have that technology yet, but we will in a few years." So, in part because of your litigation, they said, "We're willing to try this procedure at John Wayne Airport." When I heard that, I—I was 90% really excited, and I was 10% scared, because we don't know what the noise threshold—the—the noise cones are going to be with two turns. It is a safe—it should be a safe procedure, and it should be one flown by the most advanced planes. So, we're also not sure if an older plane and a—that doesn't have the flight management system to accomplish an RNP may not fly it. So, that gets back to our goals. One of our goal is, "Yeah, we'll watch the STAY, and we'll—we'll see how it goes," but we really want the underlying FINS and HERO fixed. So, that's what's coming, and it's coming just in the next quarter. This is a little—another diagram of of what the STAY looks like. This is more precise than my sketch before, which is a little too sweepy. You could see the pink line there. It has waypoints that have a gentle curve on each side. You could see—I saw Lee Pearls here from Balboa Island. It goes off in another angle on Balboa Island. It goes off more towards the ferry than Ruby. So, if this were used part of the time or half the time, arguably, there is a benefit to one part of Balboa Island versus the—the rest of it. So, this is the STAY procedure. And again, it's something the city first talked about four years ago. So, what are my takeaways? October 12th and the 7th, big days to watch. So is the STAY's implementation. And again, get the FAA to fix the FINS and the HERO and watch the STAY carefully. I'm going to move next to noise and the noise abatement departure procedures. There are seven noise monitoring stations on the departure corridor. There's three on the arrival, which I'm not going to talk about. Those don't worry us so much. The seven, though, are these. They're some people's homes. One of them—the—the towing one is—is basically, again, the Newport Dunes, near Back Bay Bistro. This is a map of where they are. And you can see they're set up kind of in triangles or cones, and the goal is, the plane takes off, and it flies through the middle of the cone, and it flies through the middle of the next one, and it flies across noise monitoring station number seven, and it goes offshore. This is a typical flight. This was earliest PIGGON, going between noise monitor station four and five, and going closer to six, and then closer to seven. I'm going to focus more on five, six, and—sorry, four, five, and six, the Upper Bay. Each one of these stations has their own decibel limit, and it's different. So, this is the decibel limit. It's in the settlement agreement for each of these stations. You could see that it's a little louder at six, where the plane is supposed to be closer to it. It's a little quieter at four, even though that's earlier in the takeoff, but that's further away from the plane track. So, I'm often asked, "Well, are these thresholds being exceeded?" So, I took a look at that. In the second quarter of 2017, April to June, this is after NextGen, at noise monitoring station four, you could see they weren't exceeded. These are—and these are quarterly averages. So, the—an American flight—and—and I picked the most—the most common American flight, which is a 737-800, I believe. Southwest, it's also a 737. So, these—these were, again, well, anywhere from 12 to six decibels below the caps. This is the same at noise monitoring station five. Again, anywhere from 15. I'm—I'm highlighting that Frontier flight, because that—that's an interesting one that's some good news out there. And then at six, you could see they're also well lower than the caps. I'm also asked, "What hap—comparing years past to today? Years past, 2014 column is the one to the right. You could see there's a little bit of difference. Some are quieter, some are noisier. In this case, the American is about the same. The rest in this one case are quieter."
Why is that? It looks like in two Americans.
Say that again, Mr. Muldoon?
I see two of the Americans loudest. I don't know about the third.
I—I—I was just comparing an American 737 that flew past noise monitoring station on the quarter of—the second quarter of 2014 to the ones that flew past the second quarter of 2017, and they have almost an identical noise footprint. Does that make sense?
It—it does, but when I see America compared to Southwest, United, and Frontier today—
Oh, why?
Why is Americans something—and then followed by United? Why are they—
It can be that—the type of plane, the—the can be where it's going. A bunch of things affect a plane's noise. If it's going back east, it probably has more passengers, more luggage, more fuel, so it can be a heavier plane. The Southwest, on the other hand, could be going just to the Bay Area with less luggage and less fuel. So, it—it will vary in—primarily based on plane size, plane type, and destination. I'm going to compare a couple more here. 2015—sorry, this is noise monitor station five. You could see the American is louder. Southwest, about the same. United, a little louder. Frontier, significantly quieter. And that's because they changed planes. They're using the new Airbus 8320neo. And similar with noise monitoring stations six, we got a little louder on the United Well, it—it's—it's hard to know, right? This is just another example of—people tell me oftentimes—and I respect what they're saying—that the planes are not going through the noise monitors. This was our observation, me, Tom, and a number of citizens on Saturday morning. This is the first hour and a half this—just this past Saturday. We stood at Back Bay Drive View Park—Back Bay View Park—and watched the planes, and this was the tracks. This is about what we saw. They're staying within the noise monitors, but you can see some straying to the east, little straying to the west. I'm going to talk about the noise abatement departure procedures next. We get a lot of questions about these. These are guidance from the FAA, and they're not required. So, please remember that—that little statement there. It's all about the flaps. This is what a flap is. So, there are two noise abatement departure procedures, exclamation point. There's the close-in, which is the one we're all so familiar with. You cut back the power, and you pull in the flaps. So, you've—you've jammed up, and then you get to a point, cut back the power, pull in the flaps. There's a faster climb near the runway area. There's also a distant noise abatement departure procedure. This is official—these are both developed by the FAA in 1991, and this one is the reverse. You pull in the—you get to that—you pull in the flaps, then you cut back the power. It means a less steep climb near the runway. It can actually result in the plane being higher later, like over noise monitor station seven or Balboa Island. This is a wonderful diagram from the Orange County Register, 2012, so I give them credit. This is just what it looks like. Arguably, that blue line looks more—the blue line in the middle looks more like the distant noise abatement departure profile. Why use one or the other? You'd use the close-in if you're trying to get out as a Class E plane, which Southwest does a lot. They're trying to get out because they don't have a Class A designation or a slot, and I don't want to get into that, but that—that's an important distinction for Southwest. That's why Southwest is pretty frequently using the close-in departure. It's an older plane or a heavier plane. Distant is happening because you got a more modern engine, basically because you can. You got a more modern plane body, and you may be lighter. These are both acceptable. The airlines themselves developed the procedures based on their aircraft's performance, and we did a study in 2008, which tonight I'm recommending you—we redo, where all of the carriers were using the close-in one. None of them were using the—the distant one. But look at what happened today. So, it's now about half and half. American is using the distant. Southwest, again, because they're shooting for those Class Es, is using close-in. United, distant. United, distant. Frontier is a, it tends to fly out as a Class E, even though it's very quiet, and it uses the close-in one. So our takeaways on noise, the station's limits cannot be changed. They cannot be lowered downward because of ANCA. The stations also can't be moved, because that can be interpreted by the carriers and others, of being a restriction based on noise. So they are where they are. The carriers can choose close-in or distant. The distant is now being used more often. When people say, I don't see the close-in departure anymore, they're right. It's not being used as often. And I did mention the Airbus A320neo. It's used by Frontier. It's like six to seven decibels lower than everything else. And it's pretty cool. It only flies out one flight a day, and it's going to Denver. But that's where the fleets are going. So if I, anybody who's holding out hope, please hold out hope for things like the Neo and the Boeing Max, as they enter the fleets. The city's goals, though, the plane should be higher when still safe.
Mr. Kiff, quick question.
Please.
Sorry, just back to the Frontier question. Didn't we, just a couple months ago, review an item, and then we did not take action? And it was related to smaller commuter-type aircraft that would be quieter? And that the airlines wanted to bring that in to John Wayne? And we, they needed our, or the county? Anyway, if you could clarify what the issue is.
Yeah, that's a good question. The commuter class is a 70 to 76-seaters and below. And that, that has become a very infrequently used plane at John Wayne Airport. The Airbus 320neo is a, looks just like a 737. It's, again, it's made by the French company Airbus. So it can hold anywhere from 140 to 180 passengers. It's a big plane. But it, because of its lightweight design and the Pratt-Witney engines, it's significantly quieter. So that action that did not relate to things like the Neo, it just related to smaller 76 to 77.
But which would be quieter?
You know, in some cases, no. They tend to be, a number of operators tend to operate them fairly quietly, but I've looked at some of the noise readings, and some, if they go out the wrong way, it can be pretty loud. So.
I thought that that was the advantage of that type of aircraft.
I think the advantage is, to me, was, most of them are quieter. And if you get more passengers out on the quieter planes, there's less passengers that can be a portion to the louder planes. And not everyone agrees with that perspective, but that's, that's what I would assert.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. City's goals, again, I think we should update the art study. I think we should encourage planes to be higher. And again, fins and hero affect noise, so we should fix that. And then monitor the monitors. The county's annual calibration is just in a couple of days, and we'll do a third-party review of that, to make sure that they are reading the noise correctly. I'm almost done. I'm going to talk next about litigation, because I get a question every now and again, why did the city sue the FAA? And here's why. The environmental review for Metroplex was woefully inadequate. It didn't look at air quality, noise, greenhouse gases. They were way too vague in descriptions of impact areas, and I'll show you the next slide, and you'll see why. Didn't involve the community in the decisions about the departure corridors. And it, and very importantly, it wasn't clear about the role of the settlement agreement, and especially in relation to noise. So your counsel, I think, very wisely said in October, before anybody else sued, that we need to make sure this doesn't progress without us having an additional lever to work on the FAA. So way too vague description of impact areas. This is what that looks like. This is what was in the EA. Basically said, you know, the pattern kind of could be anywhere within this band. And that's a huge band. So while I respect folks who say, you know, you shouldn't have sued, I think this is every reason why the counsel was wise in suing, because we needed to be able to protect the fact that five years, 10 years, 15 years from now, the FAA couldn't change the tracks all around that area and say, you know what, we studied it in 2016, and you let it go. You didn't sue.
Mr. Kiff, could you please explain some of the reasons why others said we should not have sued?
That it made the FAA clam up in talking to us. And the FAA was willing to negotiate some of these things outside of litigation. And I have not found that to be the case. I haven't found them to clam up, and I haven't found them to be less willing to work with us.
Have you found them to be more willing to work with us, or you're not sure yet with the lawsuit?
It's hard to know, yeah. But almost done. I'm going to wrap up, and how do we speed this thing up? Well, again, these are city goals. I started with, in the beginning. This is how to implement those goals. There's a resolution on your council's agenda tonight, which restates the history of our partnerships with the community, with our residents, with SPON, with AWG, with the county, and this, these successes. And then states the things that I've discussed, and that we should send that to the FAA. It's a statement of the council that, of the direction that you want to head. We do want to let the residents, including, in addition to the city's resolution, we want the residents to be able to articulate their concerns to the FAA without mailing them. So we've got a website set up, a webpage set up. You can get on our city website, go to trending, then Next Gen departures, and you can fill out exactly what's wrong, from your perspective, with the departures. We welcome it. We will batch it up every week and send it to the FAA. We've got the changes coming to hero and fins. Again, a little uncertain, but we'll watch them. We've got STAY coming. We'll update the art study, potentially. It's a fairly pricey update, to get more noise knowledge. The county is working with us to update their altitude study. I get that question a lot, are planes lower? Well, we can find out. We did a study in 2016. We'll update it in 2017. The aviation committee, if Mr. Hurdman were here, he'd know, he keeps saying, we need to engage that committee more. I very much respect that. We need to meet more often and engage that group. And then the council, I know through, Mr. Harp, will be updated on the FAA litigation regularly. I'm often asked, who works on this for the city? Here's the team. We've got legal, we've got noise experts, we've got departure profile experts. We've got outside consultant, Tom Edwards, helps me, because I get pretty busy. But I work on this a lot with Tom. We've got air quality and environmental effects that impart with our analysis that we did in 2016. And then overall policy is set by the council, and then I hopefully help you guys out with that. For more information, this, I'll leave the screen up there. This is how you can learn more about this. This is how you can express your concerns to the FAA. If you've got a noise issue, I'd call John Wayne Airport, too. You can also let me know, and I'll follow up on it. And then there's how to contact us all. With that, I'll, thank you for letting me go on and on, and certainly welcome your further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kiff. Could you please go back one slide? The staff is doing much to address these important concerns in the community. As representative of District Four, this is very important to my residents, but I view this as an issue that's important to the whole community. I would like to add another bullet point to this staff consultant team. In our staff report later on in the meeting, it cites the desire, the encouragement to reach out to your local members of Congress and the FAA. I'd like to recommend that the city of Newport Beach retain a Washington-based lobbying firm to assist specifically with lobbying the FAA and members of Congress, including Chairman Schuster and our senators here in California. And to work with the county, to attend meetings with Tom Edwards, who is very busy, doing a great job on the ground. And to have, report directly to the council and to airfare, on either a monthly or quarterly basis. I believe that the more noise we make as a city, as individuals, and with the city team that we have up here, the more likely we are to be heard. I believe the FAA litigation is, in fact, important, in that it allows us to have very direct communications in a more serious manner. And I support the litigation, and I think anything we can do to beef up our advocacy should be done. I also would request, and this is something we may have to do in ad hoc committee, that we request meetings with specific airlines, who we would request either to consider distant or other procedures that would be more considerate of the residents. We are a very wealthy city, with a lot of travelers and a lot of tourism here in Newport Beach. And these airlines, I know, are very interested in pleasing their, their travelers and business clients. And I believe that, although it may take quite a lot of effort to get the airline to see it any other way, that we should at least give it a try. I understand that we are currently in the process of looking into the monitoring system and confirming that those systems are accurate. And I just would like, also like to ensure that when we do so, we have a redundant or an external mechanism that can test the accuracy of the machine, rather than relying upon the machines themselves. That may be already what process is being used. I'm not sure exactly how it's done. But just some confirmation that those decibel readers are correct. And I'll be introducing this under a Policy A1 during the council meeting, if it's required, to move forward with those efforts. Councilman O'Neil.
Sure. So first off, well said, Mr. Mayor. In other words, the more noise we make, the less we receive?
Right.
Yeah, okay. So the, one of the things that came up under some of the staff report on item six tonight, which I won't reference the item, but I'm, I'm going to reference the issue itself, which was located at 6-25. There's a letter from the FAA to you, Mr. Kiff, dated October 25th, 2016. And one of the statements they make when they reference the 1985 settlement agreement is, I'll quote, although the FAA is not a party to the 1985 settlement agreement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The FAA is not actually taking the position that just because they're not part of the settlement agreement, that the settlement agreement is somehow not applicable to the issues we're, we're dealing with, right? In other words, just because the FAA is not a party to the settlement agreement, the FAA is not saying, well, we can do whatever we want.
That's correct. They have not said that.
Okay. And then, you know, in terms of how long things take, this was an October 25th, 2016 letter, and at the end of it, they say, the FAA will provide responses to the city's September 4th, 2015 letter comment at some point. Did we ever, so, I mean, about 14 months after that letter, they were saying, by the way, we'll, we'll get your comments at some point about, about your concerns. Did they ever respond, do you know? I mean, that's, that's about a year ago.
I believe they did not, but I think part of that was because about two days after that letter, we sued them.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Councilman Dixon.
Do you know the outcome of some of the lawsuits at other cities? For example, I remember Phoenix was, filed a lawsuit before we did. Do you know the outcome of these, or the status of these outcomes? Has it been advantageous or disadvantageous in their negotiations, if you know?
So the Phoenix lawsuit, the, Phoenix actually won their lawsuit. It wasn't, it was a little bit different, because it was based on an exemption that the FAA was trying to use in order to implement the Metroplex project. But they were successful. However, that just happened recently, so I don't know whether they're able to reach some type of agreement yet, or if they're going to be moving on with additional litigation.
Just, did I have that correct, Mr. Kiff, regarding American, United, using distant, and, and the preferable one seeming to be in close-in?
Yeah, so we have, we have this, Mr. Edwards puts it in his report. It's in the August report, and I just pulled from that. I would just offer a bit of caution, that's, which is why I like updating the art study. It's hard to know if one is better for, for all of the community. I would, I would agree that the close-in has distinct advantages. If you live in Santa Ana Heights in the anniversary track, you don't think that. But, which is why the city has tried to say, keep the settlement agreement in place, keep the overall noise. We haven't taken a position on which is better. But I, I do think with expert advice, we could do exactly what you're noting, Mr. Mayor, and probably get to that point with an updated art study.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you. Team, no other questions from the dais. Let's go out to the public. I ask that you please make your comments. And then at the end, if you have any questions, feel free to ask those questions, and I'll relay them to staff. Generally, it says not considered public comments, it's considered, I'm sorry, public questions, considered public comments, but we want your questions answered, of course. So feel free to go to the podium, state your name for the record.
Thank you. My name is Norman Myers. I'm a resident of the Bluffs, and I'm also a physician, the medical director at St. Jude Medical Center. First, I want to thank all of you for all the work that you've done in the airport. I know it's been a difficult job, and I would thank you for your work that you've done, and the continued work I'm sure you're going to do. I want to give you just a little bit more ammunition to use. People look at noise. You hear constantly people complaining about noise. And what does noise mean? It's a nuisance, isn't it? But noise is more than a nuisance. Noise is a contributor to many serious health issues. There are a lot of articles in the medical literature about airport noise and health issues. Most recent one I saw, a 70-page report from the Civil Aviation Authority, which they looked at airports all over the world, in terms of people who live there have greater health issues. These health issues are serious health issues. A lot of psychological stress, obviously. Some hearing loss. But psychological stress leads to other things. High blood pressure, heart disease, heart attacks, strokes. All of those things are higher in people who live near airports. And if you come in already having those diseases, and you live near an airport, especially if you're near a flight path, those diseases progress more rapidly. And children. Cognitive development in children is impaired by airport noise. Cognitive development is impaired by airport noise. That's very serious. And it's shown, again, shown all over the world. And when do our children walk? Between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning, going to school, which is the highest amount of noise they can produce at that time, where the airplanes are flying over every two minutes or so. And most of these reports, interesting enough, are looking at anything greater than 55 decibels as a factor in terms of health issues. So again, I just want you to have some more information. Look at noise not just as a nuisance, but as a significant contributor to many health issues. And that may help get the FAA a little bit more concerned about safety and well-being, because that's our old goal, is to provide safety and well-being of people who live in this area. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, and feel free to come forward and form lines and opposing podiums.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Calhoun. I live at 202 Villa Point Drive, here in Newport Beach. My wife, Maria, and I have lived in Newport Beach since 2009. And I'm here to talk about the airport, the noise associated with John Wayne Airport. In early August, I'm trying to stay within my three minutes here, in early August, we encountered a sudden increase in flight departure and noise going over or near our condominium. Many of the flights are visible in our skylight. These are commercial planes that are veering east and are flying lower and faster than previous. I can now identify the air carrier almost all the time. Previously, it was very difficult to identify the carrier. The John Wayne Noise Department recommended to me that I reach out to Newport Beach City Manager, Dave Kiff. In early September, I spoke with Dave about this matter. We agreed to meet at Back Bay View Park on Monday, 9/11, at 6:00 PM. Dave, Tom Edwards, and I observed the flight departures for approximately one hour. And we noticed that about half the flights were going directly over noise monitor number seven, while the other half were flying east of the monitor. Then on Monday, September 25th, so two days ago, at 7:05 AM, I took my bike down to Back Bay Bistro in front of noise monitor seven. And for 30 minutes, I captured photos of 14 planes flying over the upper Back Bay. Those photos revealed that six planes flew directly over noise monitor number seven. The remaining eight planes did not pass over noise monitor seven. Instead, they flew east of the monitor. I brought four of the 14 photos that I can leave here after I'm finished. And I also shared the photos with Dave Kiff and Tom Edwards. Dave told me he conducted a similar experiment at Back Bay View Park last Saturday, which he mentioned, and he knows similar results. Dave told me that Piggan seems to be going over noise monitor seven, while hero and fin's flights were not. I am here today to ask for your support in getting the hero and fin flight departures to fly directly over noise monitor seven and not veer east. This has had an adverse... This has had an adverse impact on our quality of life. Additionally, I would like to gain your support to help get John Wayne departures at a higher altitude and a slightly lower speed. This would help reduce the noise. And lastly, to be fair, some show restraint, while other airlines consistently hit the throttle early, and the offenders, from what I've noted, tend to be American and Southwest. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Renee Polk Johnson. I'm a resident, my husband and I are residents of the Bluffs, and first, I would just like to thank the council for your efforts in continuing to support all the residents who are present, as the airport issue currently with Next Gen has greatly impacted adversely all of our quality of life. So, in addition to the physician that spoke earlier, I would like to also sort of touch upon some additional ways to add continuous, I guess he used the word, ammunition to the lawsuit. First, the FAA actually, in my opinion, is, could be in violation of Public Law 114-190, the reauthorization of Vision 100, the Century of Aviation. The FAA, that's Goal 7, where it specifically states, "Take into consideration to the greatest extent practicable design of airport approach and departure flight paths to reduce exposure of noise and emissions pollution on affected residents." Additionally, and I'll touch upon with some additional research from the physician, there are potential health impacts, and there's current research of Next Gen flight paths and significant environmental impacts. A 1993 study of Los Angeles International Airport indicated that cardiovascular disease increased 18%, and accidental deaths increased 60% for people over 75. Suicides doubled for people between 45 and 54, and approximately 60 more people died each year. The Orange County Health Department of California published one of the most comprehensive health-related studies reviewed. It states that airport noise can specifically cause sleep disturbance, physiological stress reaction, temporary threshold shifts in hearing, interference with speech and communications, and psychological distress. An additional study, and this was issued by Harvard School of Public Health in 2013 and Boston University, researchers found that on an average, ZIP codes with 10 decibel higher aircraft noise had a 3.5% higher cardiovascular hospital admission rate. This is the first major study to estimate the association between residential exposure to aircraft noise and cardiovascular hospitalizations. A study released in 2014, conducted by our local CEC School of Medicine at USC, the Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering at the University of Washington, and the Department of Environmental and Occupational Health Sciences at the University of Washington, conducted, and I'm briefly summarizing, that takeoffs and landings at LAX are a major source of particulate matter. They're being emitted over a much larger span than had even previously been thought. The study also indicates that the air quality impacts major areas even more so than they had previously thought. This is also a concern because of, and I'm going to touch upon actually, a study that the city initiated, and that was the study that was initiated by their own researcher, and that's where I actually would like to see the city update their website somewhat, because there's some questions and answer sessions that I don't necessarily think is necessarily correct. So, the city's website states Newport Beach residents have in the past, I'm out of time, but anyhow, the city actually conducted their own study, and it somewhat negates what is on the question and answer session, and so I would like to see the city update that to reflect accurately what was included in the recommendations that were presented forth in their own study by Dr. Boyle.
Thank you. Next speaker, please, and please feel free to come up to the front and stand at opposing podiums.
Hi, I'm Dr., excuse me, my mouth is dry, Dr. Richard Mau. I'm a retired interventional cardiologist. I've, since 1973, I've lived on a frontline home, marginating the Bluffs, the Back Bay in the Bluffs, and have a question. In the early days, when John Wayne, when the noise was a major issue at John Wayne, flights from John Wayne, it was proposed that the runway at John Wayne be extended inland across the freeway, across 405 freeway, to enable flights to take, and reach a higher altitude before reaching the residential area, marginating the Bluffs, marginating the Back Bay, rather. And for some reason, I guess this was dropped, I didn't hear any more about it. Now, I'm a cardiologist, not an engineer, so I don't know whether that was considered an engineering nightmare, or too expensive, prohibitively expensive, but I wondered if that is an option that could be entertained?
Sir, at the, when you're done with public comments, I'll relay your question to staff, but this is time for public comments. If that's the only question, then I'll ask that question of staff. Thank you. Thank you, doctor. Mr. Kiff, do you think you can answer his question regarding lengthening the possibility on both ends?
It's a good question. It's a very double-edged sword to me. I've heard the same thing, that you could head towards the 405 freeway in even the run-up area that's currently used, and then, and extend that, lengthen the runway, and then have the planes take off 500 to 1,000 feet earlier and therefore be higher. All that would be well and good. However, it also opens the door to much larger planes using the full runway, such as 787 or 767, or planes that I think the carriers would try to get in here if we had a longer runway, so that's the double edge of that sword.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Joe Carroll Hunter, resident of Park Newport for 47 years. Two quick questions. Number one, we referred to the decibel level of the noise monitoring boxes, and 92, 90, 95. I've heard it, or read it, that that's equivalent to being right at a fireworks show, which, as we know, is pretty loud. Question, could somebody give me references to what 95 decibels is in an everyday setting that we might all understand? And number two, I've attended the Aviation Commission, or Aviation Meeting, and Tom Edwards has been there, and the answers that he gives is that we as citizens, when we complain that the planes are too low and that there's been a change, he simply dismisses it, says that we're wrong, and we know we're not, and it's demeaning to the citizenry that shows up when we know for a fact that we're correct. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think we'll get answers on that in the study of the altitude session, the county. I personally do feel that they're going to clip my chimney, so I tend to agree with you. So, hopefully we'll get some answers to that. And then, Mr. Kiff, do you have a comparison for decibel levels?
Yes, thanks to the city attorney, and actually, someone suggested this question would come up, and I should have an answer for it, but I only do right now. 95 decibels, a subway train at 205, 200 feet. 90 to 95 decibels, regular sustained exposure can cause permanent damage, this is just reading, a power mower, 107 decibels. So, the subway train and the power mower would be some equivalents.
Thank you, Mr. Kiff. Yes, Mr. Kiff.
Thank you, Aaron. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Lee Pearl with the Balboa Island Improvement Association, and I apologize, I don't know that I can do this in three minutes, I'm going to go as quickly as I can.
I believe you're speaking at half an H.O. of a group, so you can take longer.
Okay, and it's not going to be much longer, but if you'll indulge me maybe a minute longer, I'll try to conclude this. Today, I want you to kind of close your eyes and picture 6,000 people in the audience, because I'm going to provide a letter from various homeowners associations surrounding Balboa Island, and I just received the Peninsula Point letter also, saying that we need relief from the noise and pollution in our neighborhoods. And the reason that we're saying that is that in the past, the city really hasn't paid attention to the after-the-Back Bay neighborhoods. You know, we're at the collateral damage of John Wayne Airport, and as you know, noise and pollution are the greatest quality of life issues, I think, in Newport Beach, and if you're affected by the airport, your quality of life is definitely hampered. And we don't believe the city of Newport Beach has developed adequate public policy. We've worked with the staff, the staff has spent years working on the airport, but the council really needs to establish public policy, and the public policy needs to recognize those areas after the Back Bay and Narrows, and the impacts that the airport is having on those communities, and we don't believe the city is currently focused on that. And today, I'm here to kind of ask the council, especially the new guys, that really haven't made policy and provided direction to the staff on the airport, that it's your jobs, and we ask you to help us by setting policy. The staff is great at implementing policy. Dave does a great job of implementing it, but we believe that it's time for the council to really discuss the issue and provide some level of relief to all of our neighborhoods, and that that's very important. So, our suggestion is that the city council develops specific policy on all affected residents, so that it, the policy should be designed to provide the highest quality of life to residents, and should state that planes should fly over the most water and least number of residents. The city should advocate a plan for relief for all of the neighborhoods that have noise and pollution from John Wayne Airport. Also, we believe that the resolution shouldn't be approved today. We hope that our council member could be in attendance of further discussion, because what I'm talking about today relate to about 7,000 people that are getting, now getting pounded by the narrowing of the departures. So, if I sit on my patio now, all of the planes go over my neighbor's number-two palm frond, and it's very consistent, and that's going to doom us for a life of noise and pollution and pretty poor quality of life. So, I'm hoping that some of the comments you received today, you can redraft the resolution and implement some of these comments into the resolution. Also, focus on general aviation, that's probably the elephant in the room. As general aviation is able to expand, they're not under the same guidelines, and you really have to hold a pretty hard line on general aviation, because I think the staff could probably identify we're approaching 100 jets a day extra. I mean, those are not in the norm of general aviation, and with a redo of the hangar and terminal, that could expand extensively and have an impact on our residents. Please focus on the portion of the community that you have really never directly helped and make our quality of lives better. And then, one final comment is that I've heard Dave use the term historic departure pattern, but I want to remind you, when the airport first, I did pretty well, I'm almost concluded. When the airport first was established, I think it went over like Dover Shores and the Turning Basin, and then there was fanning, and the planes have been historically in a lot of different places. So, we ask you to really look at our neighborhoods and focus on what's best for all of those residents that are impacted so greatly and are being kind of overlooked by the city staff and council, and thank you for your time today, and I'll provide the letters. There's also a petition that is circulated, I'm sorry for all the emails you're going to get, but there'll be a petition related to our neighborhoods, too, that you will soon be receiving, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl, and I'm in receipt of the letters you provided from the various HOAs. Yeah, and, Mr. Kiff, when you have a second, I'll interact with you. Before the next speaker comes, one moment, sir, could you put that S slide up?
I do have the, this is the, correct S slide.
The other one you had?
Oh, this crazy one? This is the one that's actually correct.
Okay. The S1 is implemented with something I think, I imagine the majority of my colleagues would support, because it's the least impact over homes for the largest number of community members. But when it goes over Balboa, you said it shifts flights closer to the ferry?
Exactly.
Off Ruby? Is there a split there, or is it all concentrated in just a new part of the island?
As I understand, this is an even more precise path than an RNAV, it's called a RNP, and it would precisely send the planes down over roughly the ferry, and then over the peninsula at that same point, roughly where the pier is.
So, one concern I have is, the S path is, I think, probably good for the majority of residents in Newport Beach, but is there a way that it could be implemented to fan out at a certain point? Is that something the FAA would even consider? And these are, you don't have to have the answer now, by the way, but these are conversations we do want to have, to consider Balboa Island residents as well as both sides of the bay, and I think that conversation will continue with Councilman Herdman as well.
Fair question.
But we definitely care about Balboa Island residents.
I know, Aaron, I'd be happy to follow up on that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Joe August, I live in the Bluffs, I have a little background in aviation, I've had my pilot license since 1980, I've got a commercial rating, I've 3,000 hours. I've met with Dave, I live in the Bluffs, close to the sign. I've conducted my own field research just in the last several days. I calibrated a handheld noise monitoring device with permission from the residents at 1912, I handed out some photographs of 1912 Santiago, and I determined that because of the departure path, which is on one of the photographs, the noise readings that we're receiving are between 15% and 18% low compared to where they're actually flying over the residential communities. With that said, that takes them over the Class A numbers, which is 94 to 96. So, my emphasis would be on hiring an outside agency like an acoustical engineering firm to set up monitors closer to the residents where the planes actually fly. One of the photographs shows the actual path is over the home here in the Bluffs community, I'm sure everybody can tell you the same thing. The other point I'd like to emphasize is that the noise is really not affected at South 7th South because of the elevation and altitude that the aircraft has achieved at that point, and the other big exception to the new departure without the previous noise abatement procedure, the aircraft have increased speed approximately 30 to 40% and have decreased their altitude about the same, 20 to 30%. So, those two changes have led to higher noise readings. I'm working with Mr. Gaskins in the Noise Department down there, and just recently, you'll see, as of Friday, there were five readings of 92s. You add 20% to that, that takes the readings in our communities over 100 decibels, which is in complete violation. So, I would, you know, emphasize for the council, you guys have done a great job, Dave's done a great job with his leadership, I'd like to get more involved and get these communities together, volunteers and such, but that's the biggest emphasis, that if you're looking at that screen there, we're talking about about 20% increase over the communities. So, that's my point, and thank you very much.
Thank you. That's similar to what I articulated, but you did a much better job of doing so, looking to somehow audit or confirm that the decibel readings are accurate based on location of the flight path. Thank you.
John Sturgis, 30-year resident of Cliff Haven. I want to commend the city, the staff, and everybody that's been noted for all your efforts, and particularly David to you for the presentation, very comprehensive and understandable and very clear. The only question I have is, we didn't talk or wasn't discussed about landings. Is there a standard or regulation for when it's the Santa Anas for landing patterns? That's something you can, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kiff?
Actually, I need to ask Tom Edwards to help me on this one, because it's my understanding that the planes are authorized upon an approach during a Santa Ana wind condition to do, there's a couple of Next Gen departure arrivals associated with that, but basically, it's pretty close to what they do now. They line up straight coming into the airport runway, so they will head over coming into the, the airport runway. So they will head, head over the western part of town, Newport Harbor High School, et cetera, and then go straight down the runway. They will not be making a turn like they would, say, a reverse of what's printed on the board behind you. But their next-gen does apply to arrivals as well in that condition.
Okay, so we'll have Mr. Edwards' comment additionally after Mr. Moser's comments. Jim, if you want to go first?
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon, members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. First, I think it's important to clarify, the, the noise limit shown on the diagram, to the best of my knowledge, are what are called single event noise equivalent levels expressed in decibels, and they actually are significantly higher than what would find one, the common decibels that the city manager was referring to, because these, these are an expression of all the noise from the event compressed down into a single second makes these numbers higher. In three minutes, I can't explain that anymore clearly. Second, the comment I wanted to make is, I believe the folks at John Wayne Airport are actually quite accurate in showing what the flight tracks are on their online system. However, it's a little deceptive, because it's a 3D thing, and you have to actually go to the curtain mode to see where the line is on the ground. I think they are very accurate. Another comment I wanted to make is that the city website mentioned the 2008 study we had called Go Local, which, the objective of which would be to reduce pressure for number of flights at John Wayne Airport by emphasizing alternative destinations and ways to getting to airports such as Ontario. And the resolution does not seem to be following through on that earlier effort. It is recommending that you commit money to redoing the 2008 arts study, so-called. If that is important, I think the previous study should be posted, so that the public understands what it's about. I think it had to do with monitoring the, modeling, I should say, what the impact would be on the ground noise of moving the flights slightly to the right or left, or up or down, not quite sure. In that respect, I think the calibration of the noise monitors is not all that important, because as we saw on the slide, the flights are actually so far under these limits that they're not really regulating anything important, except at noise monitor 3 on Anniversary Lane, which we didn't hear anything about. That said, I think on the airport's online system, it would be useful for the public to see what the actual decibel readings are, so they didn't have to go out with their own handheld monitors. And that's very easy to do. Actually, John Wayne seems to be now the only airport in Southern California that doesn't show the public what the noise monitor readings are. Those other airports have monitors, because the state requires them. And I think we could look to what other airports that don't have a settlement agreement do. A common practice, for instance, San Francisco Airport, is to implement something called the Fly Quiet Program, which monitors and publicly reports not the average levels, but the noisiest flights that come out. And the publicity about that lets the public know which airlines actually are the noisiest, which, even if they don't exceed our settlement agreement levels, which ones are noisy. And that publicity presumably encourages the airlines to be quieter. Finally, if the Airbus 320 is so great, I think we should let people know when it's flying, so that they can all watch and admire it. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I love that last idea, Jim. Gathering the loudest flight, not just an average, when we approach airlines.
Yeah, Jim has some good ideas. He's included that in his email. I thought they were very thoughtful.
Yeah.
Tell him on the go.
I'll just have him wait until we're done with public comments, and he'll speak of staff.
Okay. Brian Ozoneian, resident on the peninsula, directly over the flight path. My past is multiple terms as airport commissioner for Santa Monica Airport. The hotbed of controversy, we had the 1984 settlement agreement to deal with. I'm well aware of federal agreements, their limitations, and their advantages. And it is to behoove this council to find every advantage you can, because they will find every disadvantage to give us. And they do that habitually. When I was chair of the commission, one of the things that they must be obedient at is their noise abatement program. That includes being responsive to the public. I think I sent an email out to you with, including to Dave Kiff. And by the way, I'm really impressed with your knowledge of aviation. It is outstanding. This is not easy stuff, though. When, when the public doesn't get a response, like I didn't, when I left a, a message for the noise abatement officer, I would make a recommendation to the city council to have that person dismissed. And I think that's one of the things the city council can do, is to send a letter for dismissal if they are not obedient to taking the complaints of the public. And this goes in line with also advertising the violations. Mr. Moser with the SENAL, I'm very familiar with that, because we set up, at least in my terms, advertising those like Mr. Kiff showed on the screen. And it would go something like this, just like you do with crime in the city, and you have the incidences where they are. You start putting out American Airlines, you start advertising in the register where these things have occurred. Who are the violators? You start putting it public. You start having the violations and the carriers and the owners of the aircraft for general aviation public. And you put it out there. Now, maybe they're not getting a violation, because we were able, under our '84 agreement, to set a schedule of violations. And the owner would get a warning, he'd get a second warning, and then he'd start getting fined. And the last thing they wanted to do is have their name, or their charter, or their service be advertised, and of course, it was a general aviation airport, to the public. It was embarrassing, as well as it became costly. And what happened is the noisier aircraft started falling off and going to other airports. They didn't want to be known. Eventually, we had the ability to ban certain aircraft from the airport. And now they're going to close the airport, I think, in 2025. But all of the issues you've heard are the same I've heard thousands and thousands of hours ago. This is a good crowd, but try 400 people and having to sit in a commission meeting with 400 people. It's the same thing. It's doctors talking about the mental health issues. It's physicians talking about the cardiac problem. It's the fallout from the pollution of the aircraft. You have got a big, big problem. It is a huge problem, and it has to be taken on quite seriously, even to get an airport liaison person on staff. I like the mayor's idea of getting congressional assistance, because this is going to take some real force. My, two points. There you go.
Thank you, Brian. Any other public comments on this item? Please come forward. Otherwise, we'll wrap it up with staff and Mr. Edwards' comments. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment section. Tom?
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. Did you want me to just respond to Mr. Kiff's question with regards to the arrival procedure?
Yes.
Or was there some other things I'd be more than happy to try to answer?
That would be first. And then if there's any other items you think you could address that were not accurately addressed, feel free to
The, the issue with regards to whether next, next gen does in fact deal with arrivals, yes, it does. As previously noted by Mr. Kiff's presentation, we're talking the arrivals, which customarily come from the north. And a couple of things that they have done, and the people in Tustin are feeling the effects of those, there's a, a new procedure. It's not that new, but they introduced it as part of the, some of the changes they've made at the airport in the last couple of years, and, and put more in stone with the Metroplex. And that's a continuous descent approach, which instead of the planes coming and plopping down, so to speak, they come in at, at certain levels. What it does for the carriers, less fuel, it's more efficient. However, for residents, oftentimes, you're closer to the aircraft as they're landing. And with regards to the south arrivals, when we have Santa Ana conditions, about a year ago, before Metroplex, they made a slight change and moved the arrival pattern to the west. And so that's pretty much where it is today. It comes in, and it comes in pretty straight to the runway itself. If there's anything else, there's been a lot said
There's been lots of
To this, you know, the woman who complained, I apologize if I somehow offended her. That was not my intent. But I can just tell you, with regards to altitudes, we have monitored this 2007, 2010, 2014, 2015, the end of 16. We did a tiny study, and the county has indicated they'll check them again. And it's, it's a continuing issue, because altitude is the greatest determination of noise that people perceive on the ground. Anyway, if there's anything else, I'd be happy to answer it.
I don't, I don't think so. Thank you. Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, mayor. Kind of just to step back and say, where do, what is different today in this year? We've been, as long as I've been involved in this issue and public issues, we've always fallen back. As the city policy, as Mr. Pearl was mentioning, we have the settlement agreement. Therefore, we're protected. There's nothing more we could do. We don't want to upset the apple cart with the relationships with the FAA and the county, and this delicate arrangement that we have, which is very important and critical to our quality of life, and that is the maintaining of the settlement agreement. But what I'm hearing is, in my imagination or my perception, that we are looking at this point in time, that we should be more assertive, perhaps retaining Washington support, becoming more aggressive, developing new policies. Are we, is this, do you think this can be meaningful? Maybe I should have asked Mr. Edwards as well. Are, are we, are we fooling ourselves, or do we really believe that this is an opportunity through the litigation that is pending, that we may have this moment in time that FAA will listen to us? Or are we deceiving ourselves? Mr. Kiff?
Well, I, I think the mayor has some good ideas, and I, I hadn't thought about it the way he described it. But the airport, Newport Beach, in relation to the airport, Newport Beach has a lot of airport-related threats. And I, and everybody in the room should remember this. We are in part at the mercy of the settlement agreement's success, legally and otherwise, and in part at the mercy of the Board of Supervisors, which operates the airport. And back in, when we got this extension in 2012, we got a 5-0 vote. I don't know if that 5-0 vote is there today, if we were to ask for another extension. In fact, you see Irvine gunning for Amazon, which should be a terrific thing for Irvine, a worrisome thing for us, if we felt like it's going to change cargo flights, or, or just, just business flights out of John Wayne. And I, I don't know that our relationship is, is as strong. I, I think your council as individuals is, is really refining that and improving that. We need to emphasize that more, because again, we do, there are a lot of threats. And covering the federal side is important. Covering the county side is important. And so that's why I think it probably is good ti, a good time for a rethink of our approach. Maybe we have let the pedal off a little bit more than we should, and maybe we need to apply it again.
One other question regarding the comment about general aviation and your mention about Amazon. I mean, I could just see a whole fleet of planes that are not covered, if it were Amazon or anyone else, using general aviation as a way to circumvent the requirements of commercial flights.
Remember, though, again, that's a, that's a double-edged sword. There's the bad side of general aviation. The good side is that if general aviation stays at John Wayne Airport, the commercial side doesn't get bigger. They don't push the GA out, and it just becomes entirely a commercial airport with big carriers. So we, your policy has always spoken to retaining general aviation as a viable, in a, in a viable place at John Wayne Airport. So it's, it's that balance that's important.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Avery?
Mr. Kiff, do you, what's your sense? To me, the, you know, we're kind of handcuffed here by geography and where the airport is, but quieter jets, commercial jets, are, are in the future. But it really depends on the demand, because I think the jets could be quieter now. It's just, it's more expensive for them to build quieter jets. But do you, you have any thoughts on that? Have you seen anything coming down the pike?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that question, Mr. Avery. I do, whenever I get a contact by a, a really disappointed and despondent resident who, who's saying, gosh, what is going to happen? Is this just going to get worse? I, I do tell them, please hold out hope. I think the, again, that Airbus 320neo is, is moving into the fleets. We're not the only community complaining about noise. A, certainly the carriers as a whole are interested in more fuel-efficient engines, and fuel-efficient engines happen to be quieter. So there's a lot of things going on that will help us over time. It is a bit over time, though. I think, I was reading a statistic from the FAA, it takes 20 years to over, for a air carrier's fleet, to 86% of it to turn over. And it takes 10 years for about 50% of the fleet to turn over. So it's coming. It, will it be coming soon enough for our ears? Probably not. But I, I do want people to stay hopeful.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Neal?
So one of the concerns, or one of the ideas, is the share the pain model that we've had for a long time, but obviously, not so much anymore with the next gen. So if we, as part of the litigation effort, or, or any discussions with the FAA, were to try to advocate for a share the pain model and fanning, would we be the only airport in the country doing that anymore, with the fact that it, I mean, you showed Reagan, but are, or what, did you show, I don't remember, Dulles or Reagan, but either one?
Reagan.
Reagan. So, I mean, is there any other airport in the country now even allowed to do a fan approach, or are they all on this?
It's a good question, too. I, I think, we haven't, the, the data is not all in yet. I think the FAA is pushing the narrowing for almost all airports, almost all flights. Whether some of this litigation will start to pull out, will start to result in changes airport by airport, I think is a possibility. I don't see us going back to the spread that I showed on the first slide, but I, I could see them going to three patterns, or two patterns, and say, and declaring that done for a specific airport, to at least balance it off a little bit.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other, yes, and that, Edwards?
I apologize for interrupting, but there's, there is one comment that I think needs to be made. And I know people are extremely, extremely frustrated. I think everybody shares that frustration. But Mr. Kiff emphasized something in the very beginning, in terms of if, if it becomes us against the county, or, or even sides of the bay, et cetera, it doesn't work. And one of the gentlemen who spoke earlier, I understand his frustration. He said he didn't get a call from the noise office. I can tell you that I, I work with these people on a daily basis. I deal with people in the community. They are extremely responsive. I've had to deal for other people, Ontario Airport and other airports, even on the East Coast. This is the most responsive. We have a pretty unique situation. And it goes back to something else that we also forget, and I, I may be speaking out of turn here, but the John Wayne Settlement Agreement didn't happen just because we wanted it. You needed the cooperation of the county, and it's extremely important. So I, I just add that as, as something to remember. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Duffield?
This is not a positive note here, but what I did learn about this when I was on the committee, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I think we need to be really careful about this quieter jet. And from what I remember, if you can produce more thrust without more noise, what you do then, as a bean counter in the company, you add more seats, more passengers, and you stay within the limit. So the motive, we're not giving them any motivation to be quieter. We're saying, you can't be any louder. So if you're quieter, then, and you produce more thrust, that gives you more passenger carrying ability, more payload ability. So I don't know if there's any chance of derailing that concept. But am I wrong on that, or is it something?
Mr. Duffield, you know this a lot better than I do. So it's an interesting point. I, I do know that in addition to the engineering of a plane, there's the economics of a plane, and that the 737 with 140 seats or 150 seats is, is, has an economic reason for being at that level. So, because that's kind of the sweet spot for, that's why that's one of the most well-sold planes in America.
Yes, Councilman Dixon?
I have learned in economics, as you trip my thought process, is the airline industry and the FAA are and the FAA are, I guess, partners in technological progress, but financial economics in terms of operating the aircraft, it's to narrow that bandwidth. That's what really started this, is so that the airlines can be economically viable and serve the community. So I'm not saying at all that we should ignore that, but that's where they're coming from, is their business economics. And we have to find a way to acknowledge, just as Mr. Duffield was saying, they want to fill their planes, and as much as the market will bear, so it still has to be profitable. I mean, I learned this yesterday in Washington meeting with this FAA person, it's about the airplane, airline's economics and serving communities, and finding the least, or the most energy-efficient and least cost-driven way to operate. And somehow, we have to thread that needle in meeting our needs, too. So that's what we're up against. So it's not as if they just want to be nice and fan it out, it's how is it going to be economically viable? We have to address it, I believe, on that basis.
I'll just conclude with, for the council. I'm going to put this presentation up on the website, so you can look at it at home. Jim mentioned putting the art study up there, I didn't realize we didn't put it up there, so I'm happy to put that up there, too. And again, anybody HOA, otherwise, feel free to shoot me an email, give me a call, I'm happy to talk through all this with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Okay. Public comments on agenda and non-agenda items, please come forward.
One thing we didn't talk about, and that is a disaster. One thing I handled at San Juanic Airport was multiple crashes. Now, the news is all about our disasters from hurricanes, and I can't help but think of sitting in my beautiful home and wondering one day if I'm not a target to a disaster, and if we're prepared. So I know you think about this, too, but it is a looming problem that we are exposed to something similar to what's happened, like in Puerto Rico, what's happening in Florida and Texas. But it is really, really problematic in that if we're not prepared. And I think what's happened is we're seeing being prepared in a bigger way, in a macroscopic way when things go bad. You know, where do we go? Where do we run to? How do we do this? And I think we'd be deceiving ourselves if we never think there's a hurricane or tsunami that comes through, and I see the signs for evacuation, and I often wonder what's the best thing to do. And I'm sure people in Puerto Rico wondered what the best thing to do was, they have nowhere to go. My son will be deployed there pretty soon, he works for the federal government, and the biggest problem they have is crime. And we don't think about that in Newport Beach, but it is a possibility, and it is a far-reaching thought that we are prepared as a city to have the funds, have the resources, have a backup plan, and quietly, without disturbing the residents, think about, you know, what could happen if we are in a stressful situation like the others are in the hurricane area. So I just offer that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Muldoon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Moser. In returning to the airport issue, this is a comment about the closed session. I see that you're about to adjourn to privately discuss the litigation that was mentioned in the previous item, and about which the city website tells the public we have no update to offer at this time. I would just observe that, like the settlement agreement litigation, this is a lawsuit in which the parties on both sides are public agencies, and it seems to me the only people being kept in the dark about it are the taxpayers paying for the lawsuit. I would also observe that if this is like most litigation, I would assume that the city has submitted written arguments to the court articulating what our position is, and the FAA has provided the court with written responses to our arguments, and if we're truly interested in informing the public about airport issues, there is nothing secret or private about those arguments, and I think it would be quite useful for the public to see those on the city website. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I apologize, as I was a bit too verbose earlier, but I did have a couple comments about the city's website regarding the question and answer component, one regarding the John Wayne Airport issue. It says, question on the city site, what about emissions and health impacts? And all this black stuff on my porch and patio furniture? The response that's included in the website says, there's no easy way to determine what contaminant may be coming from what source. If we live close to Coast Highway or major street like Jamboree and MacArthur, our homes will be impacted from truck and bus and car exhaust. Planes from John Wayne Airport release exhaust as well. Today, we don't see a clear or easy way to determine how to look at an emission footprint and say, this is from a truck or this is from a plane. Actually, your own study that was conducted by Dr. Boyle states, our data also indicate that chemical profiles can be useful in distinguishing between airport-associated emissions, freeway emissions, and urban background particulate matter. This study identified differences in the chemical composition of emissions from airport and freeway sources. From that, and where it also states that further studies would be useful. Another question on there, it goes on to say, Newport Beach residents have in the past asked the city government to see if a health impact study could be done of residents who live near the John Wayne Airport flight paths. We did a follow-up on how or whether that could be done, including with UC Irvine. A meaningful health impact study follows a specific group of people over many years. It can work best if persons remain in a fixed location over the duration of the study period, agree to divulge extensive and personal medical information, and if we have an ability to factor in or outside non-airport pollutants. We don't think that capability exists here. Again, that negates your own study, that also states, despite the minimal, and you guys had a very small sample size, N equals 3, one of which the sample size locations was close to us in the Bluffs at the Boys and Girls Club. It employs statistically significant differences in both particulate matter concentrations and chemical profiles were detected between locations. This was only with a sample size of three at the Boys and Girls Club in the Bluffs. The fact that any results prove statistically significant, again, I'm quoting from the city's study by Dr. Boyle, at this level of replication suggests a larger-scale sampling project would yield useful information. It goes on in your study as follow-up research to consider, increase statistical power of the current study set by adding more sampling periods at the present study locations, obviously with the sample size of three, that's small, to make larger assumptions. And also, I would like the city to consider, when they mentioned that it's difficult to do, and we don't think that capability exists, longitudinal studies are quite common, especially, I mean, just to cite a few, longitudinal studies on heart disease, longitudinal studies on the effects of smoking, they're quite common in research. I mean, yes, they're time-consuming, yes, they require people's consent, but that's what IRB is for. So I would just ask that the city reconsider the question and answer to provide more factual information as it's misleading to the public.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none. Mr. Harp.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. The city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with legal counsel regarding the case entitled City of Newport Beach versus the Federal Aviation Administration, which is item number 4A on the agenda.
Thank you. We are at recess until the 7 o'clock regular meeting. Call the meeting to order for the September 26, 2017, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Hurdman has an excused absence.
Thank you. Closed session report, Mr. Harp.
Thank you, Mayor Muldoon. There is no closed session report this evening.
Thank you. Please all stand to be led in invocation with a very special guest, Ms. Twila True. Please come forward to the podium.
So, my name is Twila True, and I am a proud resident of Newport Beach. I am a family office, we own a family office, multiple enterprises, and a happy family of four. Life was not always that way, though, for me. I am a, I come from Pine Ridge Reservation, I'm an Ogallala Lakota Sioux from the Lakota Nation originally, and I was fortunate enough to meet my husband on a blind date. Someone set us up right here on PCH Villanova's nearly 20 years ago. The Ogallala Sioux Nation is the poorest place in the country, so it's not the poorest reservation, it is the poorest place in the country. The average income is $3,000 per year, 17 people per household, 45 years of age life expectancy, the highest infant rate mortality in the U.S., and a 90% unemployment rate. When I met my husband, I already showed up with the pride of tribe. My husband lived on Balboa Island and embraced me. I had long, black hair, long, straight, black hair, and when we met, he said, who are you? And I'm Twila True from the Lakota Nation, and he said, beautiful. Since then, Newport Beach has embraced me, and what Newport Beach taught me is that, Newport Beach said, we embrace culture, we love who you are, we love diversity, and most of all, that a woman can, a woman can do and can be anything she wants to be. So today, here I am, 20 years later, my name is Tokata Yewawokiawi, and I'm very thankful for Newport Beach. Thank you for having me here today. Yes, if you all would pray with me. Thank you for all of the people here today and their intentions. Thank you for wishing us well, guiding us in our lives, and trying to create a healthy and happy community in which we value each other, and we try to prosper and encourage each other's growth. I am a direct reflection of that, and I thank you all for being here today, and we pray that all of our work will continue to create others to prosper and do well. In God's name, amen.
Amen. And before you step away, I had the pleasure of attending your gala for the benefit of the Sioux people. Where could someone learn more about your cause and how to help?
Yes, True Sioux Hope, truesiuhope.org is the name of the organization, and one of the board members is the pickup family, and so we were fortunate enough to have our first gala here at the Balboa Bay Resort. And so, anyone who would like to assist or help, truesiuhope.org.
Thank you so much, True.
Thank you.
And now, to be led in the pledge of allegiance, Councilman O'Neil.
Please place your hand over your heart, repeat after me, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if those of you who are regulars, including some of my colleagues up here, when we passed the policy change, we changed the order of the ceremony, so we start now with an invocation, followed by a pledge. Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
City council announcements for non-disc, these are non-discussion items, and new items that council members would like to be introduced for future agendas. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few things. I had the pleasure of reading a proclamation to the Newport Mesa Pro-Literacy Group, which over at the public library, there are about 150 adults who are learning how to read, thanks to about 100 adult volunteers in the area. If you're interested at all, by all means, please do sign up, either as a tutor, or if you would like to learn to read, that's also a great location as well. I was also able to participate in the Fire Ops 101 program put on by our Newport Beach Fire Department. I know a number of my colleagues have been able to do that. I was lucky enough to have our clerk, Blalani Brown, as our, as my partner, which was fantastic, because she was able to cut car doors off, and I was able to hold them for her. The Newport Beach Police Officers Association Foundation, I just want to commend them for their support of the Marines 101 Foundation, truly a special event. Newport Coast Community Center celebrated its 10th anniversary recently, and had a nice party up there for families and friends of the Newport Coast Community Center. We also, a lot of us attended the Newport Beach Chamber Fire and Lifeguards Appreciation Dinner, which, again, fantastic job by our Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, and congratulations to our winners. The Girl Scouts grand opening, I'm going to defer, I'm sure Councilwoman Dixon will touch on that. This coming Sunday, we have the Corona Del Mar Sandcastle Contest. On October 7, we have the Crystal Coast Soiree. And then, just one other quick note, most of you have probably seen the Corona fire and all the devastation that it's causing. Just want to note that my, our thoughts are with those impacted, and especially given that we've got three fire engines up there with 12 of our Newport Beach Fire Department personnel fighting that blaze, just helps us reflect on how blessed we are to have firefighters who are risking their lives to protect ours. Thank you.
Mr. Pieter. Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of announcements. It's been a busy past couple of weeks. Newport Beach Historical Society 50th Anniversary, they had a fun, they had a fun party at the Balboa Pavilion last Friday night, a number of us were there, thanks to the Newport Beach Historical Society. It was a great historical review of the history, starting with the McFadden landing at the Newport Pier in 1852, in that period. So the actual McFadden great-great-grandson, two great-great-grandsons who now live in San Diego, came up and shared family stories and their family scrapbook. It was really a wonderful evening to hear about our formative history. Last Saturday was the wonderful grand opening for the Girl Scouts, the 21,000 Girl Scouts in Newport Beach, or Orange County, I should say. I proudly wore my Girl Scout pin to the opening of the Arduous Girl Scout Leadership Center, thanks to the very generous contribution of many in the community, including the Arduous Family Foundation, hence the name. It's just, I thought, frankly, I had not been there, I thought it was going to be just kind of a meeting place. It is a learning center, it is state-of-the-art learning, career planning, STEM research, science, technology, engineering, and math research. So the Girl Scouts of Orange County are really on the fast track to life success because of the Leadership Center. I flew back the next morning, was on an early flight to Washington, joining other electeds in Orange County through the ACC, the Associated California Cities of Orange County, ACCOC, for a planned Washington visit. visit. We talked on subjects related to drones, FAA, sober living, housing, transportation, met with key congressional leaders. Very worthwhile and good use of time, and I'm sharing with staff and my colleagues some of the learning. So we had a study session earlier today on FAA flight paths, and we did have, engage in that discussion yesterday. So it was very timely. Last week, I also had my 17th Town Hall. Very grateful for the residents of District 1 who attended, a standing room only. It was great to hear the report from the fire chief on the new proposed fire station, and from our community development director, and our traffic engineering, on some of the important improvements in the peninsula, including a soon-to-be-presented-to-council Peninsula Crosswalk Safety Improvement. So more to come on that. Last Thursday, I guess it was, I was triple, had triple booked Lido House Hotel Hard Hat Tour, fantastic. That's coming along very nicely. It's going to be, it is already going to be a showpiece, a collector item, architectural piece. They're planning to open late February, soft opening, I guess in February, but more in March. It's really going to be exciting for all of us to take great pride in. And Bob Olson is adding a fine, fine touch of architectural detail to making that a truly fine place in our community. The Fire and Lifeguard Dinner, and thanks to the Newport Chamber, I was only able to go to the reception because then from there, I went to the Orange County Tax Association, and where I was happy to receive the Rose's Award. Here, this is the award. And this was on behalf of the city council's unanimous vote a year ago to place on the November 2016 ballot, Measure MM, that would require a supermajority of the council before it placed a council, before it placed a measure related to tax increase before the voters. So I thank my colleagues for their support, and we all worked on that together, the prior council and this council, to do what's right for the taxpayers of Newport Beach and to protect them. So I was happy to receive that award on their behalf. And I think that's it. Measure MM, actually, I went back and looked at my notes, was one on 82% of the vote, so we were on the right side of that issue. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Avery.
I attended a few things that made me appreciate the fabric of our community, and starting off with the firefighter and lifeguards appreciation dinner, which was a great, really a really nice evening, and some really good stories from those firefighters and lifeguards that were honored at that event. And also, attended the Arduous Girl Scout House opening. Fantastic facility. It reminded me once again, we've, how far we came from when that whole area there with Marina Park and the old Girl Scout House, which was pretty much falling down, was the new house and the new Marina Park replaced an area that was vastly underutilized as public land. So it's really great to see the area now really done with the Girl Scout House opening. And I also went to the Balboa Island Carnival, so sort of stood in for my colleague Jeff Hurdman, and it was a, it was a really fun deal. And that was just another great example of the uniqueness of our island down there and the community there that shows out in force for these kinds of events on Marine Avenue. And finally, at the Newport Beach Historical Society, excellent presentation, really on the founding fathers of our city. And so, all together, just a great four events that were obviously open for any citizen to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Okay. And sort of in line with what I said, the study session, approaching, or I'm going to request to bring back for a vote, suggestion I made a few years ago, and I made about an hour ago at study session, to hire a DC-based lobbyist to help the city efforts in dealing with the federal, or FAA, and the county, to assist Tom Edwards, to also, probably separate, maybe related item, I'm not sure actually, entering direct communications with airlines, potentially could be the same DC-based lobbying firm, or it could be another firm. We'll have to look into that. Trust staff would have good judgment after researching a little bit. And then, third, or last, is come up with a method, whether it's with another consultant or our own, acquiring our own technology, to track sound levels to confirm that the decimal readers in place are accurate, not only as to noise levels, but as to different flight paths that may be affecting the current location reading. So that's, for those who want to hear a study session, that's a lot to take in. But this will help us ensure that they are following the settlement agreements, that they're acting in good faith, and that, most importantly, that we are getting through to the FAA.
Madam Clerk?
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 14. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Counsel, any items to pull from the consent calendar? Mr. O'Neil?
Item number five, the proposed revisions to mooring specifications.
Thank you. Councilman Pieter. Councilwoman Dixon?
None.
Councilman Avery?
None.
Mayor Protam Duffield?
Out of abundance, out of an abundance of caution, I am recusing myself from item number five.
Thank you. And I'll request that you leave the room when we discuss the item. I would like to lodge a no vote on item four. Mayor Protam Duffield, you have a motion.
I move the balance of the consent calendars, item 1 through 14, with item number five pulled by Councilman O'Neil, and item number four from Mayor Muldoon.
Mr. Duffield, Mr. Mayor, just, we also have a substitute red line resolution on item six. And if you wouldn't mind incorporating that into your statement?
Please do.
Great. We have a second from Councilman Pieter. Public comments on consent calendar? So this is your time to come and comment on any items that are going to be moved for approval, not for items that have been pulled, including item five that was pulled. Please step forward and state your name.
Good evening. Alexander Gonzalez, on behalf of Congressman Dana Rohrbacher. Good evening, Kevin, Mayor Muldoon, City Council, residents of Newport Beach. Again, my name is Alexander. I'm district representative for Congressman Rohrbacher. The congressman had asked me to be here today, because I, along with another member of the congressman's staff, handle all federal aviation matters for the 48 congressional district. I wish to submit the following for the record. Congressman Rohrbacher has introduced two amendments to the FAA reauthorization bill. This bill is HR 2997, the 21st Century Aviation Innovation, Reform, and Reauthorization Act. The congressman's amendments read the following. The administrator of the Federal Aviation Administration shall ensure that all aircraft transitioning from flight over the ocean to flight over land within the Southern California Metroplex shall fly at no lower altitude than necessary to provide for safe flight operations. The Second Amendment, when analyzing changes to procedures and flight operations, the administrator of the Federal Aviation Administration shall consider safety as the top priority, community concerns as the second priority, and efficiency as the third priority. And I am certain that Councilmember Dixon's visit with the congressman today was more than sufficient to answer any questions, but I'm happy to respond to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any requests to speak, so I appreciate your presentation this evening. Thank you. Any other public comments on the consent calendar?
Mayor Muldoon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I apologize for missing the beginning of the previous presentation, because I was going to the lobby to see if the public had seen this redlined version of the resolution, item number six. And I did not find a copy in the lobby. I don't know if the previous presentation was explaining what the changes are, or if the public knows what resolution you are adopting, and how it differs from what we saw in the staff report. The one in the staff report looked like it was thrown together rather quickly. It has a number of typos in it. I won't belabor what those are, but I think when you're adopting a resolution, it would be good for the public to see what the resolution is. Typically, there's something shown on the screen showing the changes to it and so forth, and I don't see that happening tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, Mr. Harp, could you summarize some of those red line changes?
Yeah, just briefly, there were copies that were provided out to the public, but there were so many people at the study session that they took all of them. So we'll make sure that Mr. Mosher gets another copy. Most of them weren't substantive in nature, is cleaning up some of the facts. So we will make sure that he gets that, though.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Any other comments from the dais? Seeing no requests to speak, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance titles for items three and four. Ordinance number 2017-13, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to certain front yard and side yard setbacks. Ordinance number 2017-15, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach, amending section 14.24.065 of Title 14 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to sewer use charge. Councilmembers Duffield, Avery, and Avery, if you can please vote, thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Thank you. Item five was pulled by Councilman O'Neil. I don't know if he's requesting a staff report, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not asking for a staff report. My, I intend on moving to continue the item to allow more public comment, particularly through a, through a mooring, the mooring association, which has worked so hard on additional mooring regulations. And my understanding is that they have not had an opportunity to fully comment. So I would simply ask that we provide that additional time and continue this to a next, to a following meeting after they've had the opportunity to comment. So after public comment, I'll make that motion.
Excellent. And I join the sentiment. So let's open it up. I believe the votes are there to continue this item, but if you'd like to speak on the item, please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
My name is John Ponik. I have a research vessel on F-14. I'm a disabled war veteran from Vietnam, from being a POW. And I have a top contractor's license, the top license you can obtain in the United States. So I'm familiar with all of this type of a thing. I've provided you all with some information that I'm going to be covering. So with no further ado, there are several questions that need to be answered about this, the specifications. First of all, of what authority they got the chain sizes and so on. What specific authorities were they derived from? Coast Guard, Army Corps of Engineers, et cetera, the authorized government agency. And if so, please produce that. What grade of chain is this chart referring to, i.e. grade 43 would be the minimum that should be used for such a purpose? Why is it that it's not indicated on the chart as to what the chain specifications, or the grade of chain is? Chain strength is not determined by the size, but by the grade, which determines the size that should be used. There would be various different sizes depending on the grade, which is the strength of the chains. I didn't see any of that on the proposed chart. Been used for quite some time already without approval, apparently. Chain size increases in standard increments of 1/8 inch, which is normally used for a range of moorings according to their weights. This proposed chart, even though apparently not yet approved, seems to have been in effect for at least the last three years. How is it that, how is it that, and why not the chain rules in the Harbor Department's regulations? Section 17.25.020 F1 describes what the strength, the breaking strength should be on the chain. Chain breakage strength to be six times the mooring weight, which is fairly standard. This only treats the symptoms, not the cause. A reason for having this chain weight chart approved, which was cited, is that there have been moorings that have moved and chain purportedly broken during storms. Yet it would appear that this very chart has been in effect for a long enough time for the moorings to have been in its effect already. That's so. Whoever would be responsible? It has been in an experience that it is not the normally regulated by authority moorings, chain weight, that has been the problem, but either the bottom upon which it's setting, that the chain has become tangled with the weight, or the weight has been set on the chain. Bottom under most of the J field, for instance, is particularly such a treacherous one with several feet, it would appear of slimy slippery mud and bird, mammal, and fish leavings, upon which anything could easily slip and slide around, no matter what the weight is.
Mr. Pike? So, Mr. Pike, I think you have brought up many valid points, which we will discuss in the next council meeting when we continue this to it. You're welcome to speak at it, but your input's important, and we're going to be working with you and the Mooring Association to get a better understanding of this. So I request that, well, the time is up to speak. I didn't mean to cut you off, though. I request that you return to the next council meeting when we discuss it, and share your feedback with us then. Can we basically just continue the item?
All right. And you all have a copy of all of this. At any rate, it's just, I'm here to, and open for questions if it's not quite understood. Thank you.
Thanks much. Thank you for your service, too. Next speaker, please.
Well, good evening, counsel. I am Carter Ford. Have the pleasure of being acquainted with all of you, and it's good to see you. I am here tonight on, well, in the role of the community relations member of the Newport Mooring Association Board of Directors. We learned only yesterday, thanks to one of you, actually, sending an email indicating that this subject was up tonight. So I've done all I could in the last 24 hours to gain information, and thank you for suggesting and indicating you are open to continuing this item, so there can be greater interaction and involvement of the public. I'd like to offer the following thought to you. The question becomes, how long to continue it? Thank you for the two weeks. But I'd like to add for you, in case I didn't succeed in getting this word to you, and I'm not sure if what I wrote got there, that the mooring association's a large group, there's a lot of people involved, a lot of knowledge. We enjoy contributing and being a part- We enjoy contributing and being a part. Our annual meeting is October 24th. And the featured guest speaker that we invited is our new harbor master of the city, Dennis Dergan. And that would be, in my view, an optimal time for many people to get to weigh in and help, first of all, feel good about what's to be done, and to contribute their thinking on that. So the question becomes, is there a level of urgency that says it should come sooner than that? I don't believe so. One point you should all be aware of is that, and this is a good way to make change of this nature, and good for staff for proposing it, is that the increase in weights, if there are to be same, and we are not saying we are inherently opposed to that, not at all. It's the process that concerns us. That will be a two-year process going through the individual mooring servicing requirements. So no matter when you start, whether it's tonight, or two weeks from now, or two months from now, from that time, you're two years out going through this process in any event. So the opportunity to have the community feel they were considered and to get the benefit of that is maximized by, frankly, your continuing this to past that late October date, maybe even to the first of the year for implementation. It gives us all a chance to work together. One of the reasons I feel the Harbor Commission might have been so willing to just vote on this is a well-written staff report, but we find in it things that imply things that we feel lead people to potentially lull them into, oh, this doesn't really matter type of thing. For example, a quote from the staff report, with due respect, is, on behalf of, may I go a little further? I'll try and wrap it up here.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That the expected cost to the typical, to those mooring holders who are going to have to be adding weight is estimated, or expected to be, it's in the staff report, $400 to $500. Well, frankly, that's simply, in our view, not correct. To give you an example, a 60-foot mooring is going to cost $960. I don't know if there's tax on top of that or not, based on a quote that I got yesterday from Chuck South, who, of course, is South Mooring and does this work. And only when you get all the way down to a 40-foot mooring is that estimated fee, based on Chuck's rates, drop under $500 to $480. So this is significant amount of money to anybody. And once you adopt this, anybody who's mooring is up for servicing in the ensuing month is going to need to be prepared to come up with whatever cost is incurred. So to me, that's another reason to extend this. We could go further. I think since I'm over time, I should let it go. We also have thoughts, oh, knowing of the, and this is important, and I'll be gone, the sand line moorings. An interesting concept. You have us set out there now. However, we found at NMA there was an intense variation in opinion as to whether these were actually going to work well, and we feel in many circumstances, our members feel in many circumstances, there are issues there. So we included in our most recent newsletter, a survey, and that newsletter went out a week ago. So we will get the results of that survey by the, our annual meeting in late October. So my request is for a longer continuance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Councilman O'Neil? Any other public comments? Seeing none, Councilman O'Neil?
Real briefly, I'd just say thank you very much to the Harbor Commission. I know a lot of those folks have quite a bit of information about moorings. Thank you, Chris, for putting the staff report together. I thought it was quite good, and I appreciate the efforts that you and Dennis Dergan have been making toward the ongoing mooring maintenance. I'd simply like a little bit more public input. And is there any reason we can't continue this to November 14th meeting? Is there any pressing need for this to go into place right away?
Nothing pressing. The intent was, one of the intentions was to have this in place before the winter season. I don't think November is too deep in the winter season, so that would work. And just to get the A resolution passed, and happy to do whatever date the council would like.
Thank you, Chris. I'll move to continue this item to November, our November 14th meeting.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dixon. And Mr. Avery, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think this is all good. I'm happy with extending it, and I'm really happy that the Newport Mooring Association will have an opportunity, because there is a wealth of knowledge there, and obviously so many of them have many years of experience with the moorings out there. I don't think there's any question that winter storms are more severe, at least the last couple of years have been, and certainly put some real tests on the gear out there. But I'm sure we can come up with a good solution. And as Carter said, it's going to take a couple of years to roll through everything and make these changes. So it's all good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you. And, Mr. Hart, would you get, Mayor Porton Duffield? Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come forward. Sir, if you also plan on commenting, please come forward as well. Anyone else who plans to speak, please come to the front.
Good evening. My name is Richard Newhouse, and as you probably remember from last meeting, I was one of the two people who went to the hospital as a result of the production place fire number two. The guy who set off the bomb, he went off to Santa Ana Hospital, and I went off to Hoag Hospital with smoke inhalation. The investigation that's been done on this production place fire number two is quite inadequate, and we're not getting much help from Newport Beach. You folks have a surveillance film of the fire scene. Your police department has it. We've been trying to get it now for 10 months, or almost 11 months, and the story we get is that, well, it's a subpoena item. Well, you can make things really expensive, you can make things really difficult, and you can really step all over the middle and lower class, but, you know, some of us know when we're getting stepped on. Why put us to the expense of having to do a subpoena for a surveillance film of that fire starting? It would help us to investigate it, to get to the truth. Your police department knows very well, the fellow who set off the bomb did not tell the truth. His story just rolled over from one phony story to another phony story. Mr. Falk, the guy who set the butane bomb off, he probably had street sense enough to know that if you're manufacturing drugs and everything blows up, then that's a long prison sentence. So he had the street sense to know that there's no sense admitting something that's going to put him away for 20 years or something. So he came up with a series of concocted stories that were clearly preposterous, and your police department knew it. I read over their 30-page report, and it's perfectly clear. They're intelligent people. They knew that they were getting a phony story. But some of the things that the police department didn't get, we've gotten. That is, the production place fire aggrieved citizens team. We know people in the neighborhood. We've gotten stories that the police department never got, probably. Things that are incriminating against people, and we, of course, are not in a position of hurting our sources. But I think the public of Newport and the country would be well-served to find out the truth as to how this fire started. We've got a couple of pictures, as you probably remember, last week. The 20,000-square-foot, two buildings, and then the fire. And the one you didn't see was the ashes being dug through by the hazmat people in their full white uniforms, and they were digging and piling all my stuff into bags and probably sending it out to Vegas to be, you know, added the toxic fill out in the nuclear area. Again, I would request that you direct the city fire department to be cooperative, to be transparent, to be helpful of the citizens who are trying to find the truth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and city employees. My name is Ty Hanson, and I'm a Costa Mesa resident and an often visitor to Newport Beach. And this is what that fire looks like. This is the production place fire. It's a massive blaze. These are 30-foot flames that Mr. Newhouse is talking about. Now, I was the lucky person to have taken this photograph at 2:48 a.m. This is a very telling photograph of that fire. If you notice in this fire, there's not one squirt gun of water on that fire yet. This was called in about 2:30. This is about 20 minutes later. I'm the closest person to the fire. There isn't a firefighter or a police officer anywhere on this premises. This thing is burning out of control, and the reason that we show up here at these council meetings is we have issues clearly with the gentleman that started this fire. There was a man that was in one of these units that started the fire, and so we've got issues with him. But the problem that I have with this photograph, what this photograph tells you is there are 40 storage units fully engulfed here. This is completely out of control, and it only took about 40 minutes for 20,000 square feet of storage space to be completely obliterated. That's my unit dead center. All my belongings are melted in that unit, and I'm standing out in the parking lot at 2:48, wondering what just happened. Here's the issue. I've heard a lot of great things about all the things that are going on in the city, and I applaud those things. But what I believe is the day-to-day mechanics of what really happens day-to-day just really hasn't caught up to where the city's trying to go. I have done a deep dive. I've looked back 46 years and have done diving that you don't even know about, and I have found that not one time in 20, probably 30 years, has a firefighter ever been on this property and inspected this place. Now, how does that happen? You can tell by the photographs, well, you can't tell by the photographs, but what I know to be a fact is there is not one fire extinguisher on either building. A fire, a $60 fire extinguisher might have been able to extinguish this. This is the photo you don't want the Newport business people to see, because it reminds them of all the money they lost for the two weeks they couldn't open their businesses surrounding this. This is a little sliver of property that's forgotten in Newport Beach, and it needs to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you've come a couple of times. I'm not sure what we can address, so I'll just defer to the city attorney on this item.
Yes, I know that both of the gentlemen have filed claims against the city. We are looking to set up a meeting with them to talk to them about their concerns, and we'll probably be doing that in the next week or so.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing no other requests to speak, or reports from city council on committee activities, Mr. O'Neil?
None.
Mr. Pieter?
None.
Ms. Dixon?
None, thank you.
Ms. Avery?
None.
Mayor Porton Duffield?
None.
I have none as well. Onto public hearings. Item 15, staff.
Mr. Mayor and council members, both Mike Pizzani and Ann Ewing, who have worked on your non-exclusive commercial solid waste franchises, are here if you have any questions. But you have spent a lot of time on this, so unless you'd like a staff report, we're ready to open the public hearing, I would imagine.
I don't see any requests for a staff report. Public comments on this item? Seeing none, bringing it back to the dais. Is there a motion?
I move approval of staff recommendation.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Dixon. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2017-16, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach granting non-exclusive solid waste franchises to provide solid waste handling services within the City of Newport Beach. The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Thank you. Item number 16.
Give us a moment, and Mr. Heatherton will come up, I think, and make the presentation.
We're making good time here.
Pardon me, Mayor. Thank you so much for having us tonight, council and Mayor Maldune. I have, it's Mrs. Arlene Greer of the City Arts Commission, who chaired the committee for the sculpture exhibition, who will make the recommendation, and then we'll have a brief presentation by our consultants from Arts OC. And Mrs. Greer.
Good evening, Mayor Maldune and members of the city council. I'm Arlene Greer, Vice Chair of the City Arts Commission and the Chair of the Sculpture Garden Exhibition Subcommittee. On behalf of the City Arts Commission, I would like to thank the city council and staff for your continued support of the arts in the city, and more specifically, the Arts Commission programming and the City Civic Center Sculpture Garden Phase III program. The Arts Commission has worked diligently to identify and recommend nine sculptures and an alternate that demonstrate artistic merit, durability, practicality, and appropriateness. We believe each sculpture will be a significant contribution to the Phase III program. Council will be pleased to know the City Arts Commission has made multiple efforts to solicit input from the city residents here in our community, from an online survey to public forums. The Arts Commission has shared with our community each and every artwork submitted for consideration for Phase III. The City Arts Commission believes that the recommended works are a well-balanced representation of public art that will appeal to a diverse audience of all ages. In essence, the City Civic Center Sculpture Garden has become a museum without walls. This provides Newport Beach with the opportunity to exhibit significant works of art on a rotating basis while engaging the artistic and creative senses of our residents, visitors, and businesses, minus the liability of administrative costs that would be associated with maintaining an art museum and public art. An added benefit of the city garden are the revenues generated by the thousands of annual visitors to the Sculpture Garden who utilize local restaurants, shops, and services during their visits to the City Civic Center Sculpture Garden. At this time, I would like to introduce our consultants, and I would, this would be Director Rick Stein of Arts OC and Professor Joe Lewis, former dean of the Claire Trevor School for the Arts at UCI. City council members and Mayor Maldune, I would like to thank you for your most generous support this last year for all of our Arts Commission programming. I think the community has enjoyed it. We appreciate your interest and your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. Welcome, Mr. Stein and Professor Lewis.
Thank you very much, Mayor Maldune, members of the council, members of the staff, and Arts Commission Vice Chair Greer. It's been a great privilege for us to assist the city for a third year. Arts Orange County is the countywide nonprofit arts council, and we're designated by the Orange County Board of Supervisors as its official county local arts agency and state local partner. I was assisted on this project this year by Joe Lewis, professor of art and former dean of the Claire Trevor School of the Arts at UC Irvine. And as Vice Chair Greer mentioned, the main objective is to get nine sculptures of high artistic merit, durable enough to withstand the elements, and appropriate subject matter for all ages, suitable for display in the local... for all ages, suitable for display in the locations within the park that had been predetermined by the landscape architect Peter Walker and Associates when it was designed originally. The process, in brief, began in April. An RFP was issued to over 150,000 artists through 27 national and international artist networks. There were 46 submissions received that were deemed eligible. These were shared with the public, both through the online survey. On the online survey, we had 375 members of the public participate in the voting. 27 prizes were drawn at random and given to survey participants donated by the Pacific Symphony Philharmonic Society, South Coast Repertory, and Irvine Barclay Theater, whom we'd like to thank. The judging panel consisted of three members of the city's Arts Commission, Arlene Greer, Miriam Baker, and Grace Devine, who is also with us this evening, and two outside members, Pat Gomez, director of the City of Irvine's Fine Arts Center, who is a well-known expert in public art, and Bob Nicole, dean of innovation at Blizzard Entertainment, well-known producer of the World of Warcraft computer games. We'd like to thank them all for their service on the judging panel as well. Throughout the process, there were many opportunities for public comment. There was a study session of the City Arts Commission that had discussed and reviewed all of these submissions and invited public input and received public input. The judging panel took into consideration the votes from the public survey as well as the comments by the public in those sessions. And at its regular September meeting, the City Arts Commission reviewed those judging panel recommendations and invited further public comment and came up with the recommendations we're presenting to you this evening. And I wanted to note that all of the selected sites for these works are locations that have been used to exhibit sculptures during the prior two phases. And last week, the Phase II sculptures were removed in preparation for Phase III installations in October, and an official reception for the new exhibition is slated for Saturday, October 28. And I'm now going to hand it over to Joe to take on the presentation.
Thank you, Rick. Mayor Maldune, city council members. As you can see, here's the map that Rick has talked about. The works will be placed in locations that have had works in the previous phases. I'd just like to say that this is a diverse group of works, including figurative, representational, and abstract work. So it's very diverse. It also has three women, six men of the nine artists. Three of the artists are California-based. One is based in Key West, and as I'm sure you know, has had some difficulties lately. However, the piece, which was the number-one choice by the public comment, is in Chicago. So there's no problem with that piece. Let's move on. Burnt Matchstick, really wonderful piece, will add incredible color. It's a strong piece. It's 40 feet tall. It'll be kind of, it'll locate people here as they move through the space.
Let me just jump in briefly to give you the key. So we have the name of the artist, the name of the work, the medium, the dimensions, the sale price, if it were to be purchased the year it was created, the overall budget that was proposed by the artist, which is $6,000, is the maximum that they were allowed to ask for, of which $600 honorarium is what the artist intends to retain. PC stands for the public comment ranking, so it was ranked number two, and the artist's location is Chatfield, Minnesota. I won't give those out again. And here is a depiction of it in its proposed location.
I'd just like to also add that the overwhelming majority of the works selected for this phase were in the top echelon ranked by the public. So the public and the selection committee were pretty much on the same page. That piece, No Swimming, by Oleg Lobkin, a California artist.
She put this in big Corona.
Cindy Diable, Life is a Balancing Act, bronze, life-size, approximately five feet. One, that was a multiple, multiple looks at the same piece. Cosmic Glints by Patricia Vader. A number of the works also use, they're green works, so they're using recycled materials. Getting Your Bearings by David Boyer. This piece was at Burning Man, by the way. It's a kinetic piece, again, using, you know, reusing materials that we use in everyday life. Be Still and No, 13-foot welded Corten steel. One of our California artists, Flight. This was the number-one choice by the public. Popsicles by Craig Gray, and you can see he's a resident of Key West, Florida, as I said earlier. The piece is in Chicago, so there won't be a problem with that. And we have one alternate piece, just in case one of the other artists has to recuse itself, which has happened twice. We've, two artists have pulled out of the show. I'd just like to say that this body of work has whimsy, is serious, it's, you know, thought-provoking, and I think it's a great cross-section of the kinds of work that we see in the public today.
So thank you again for the opportunity to work with the city on the project, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Quick question. Whose idea was it to do a poll? I really liked that idea, and I'm just wondering.
During the process, I believe, of preparing for the Phase III sculptures, there was a desire expressed on the part of the city council to invite and actively solicit more public input throughout the process, and that just seemed to be one of the useful tools. It was a tool that we actually used, it's now almost five years ago, when we conducted the city's cultural arts master plan. We did an online poll at that time as well.
And I have to say that, you know, kudos to the city council, because it's very unusual for that to happen in this kind of process. And so, you're kind of on the cutting edge of how public art is being adjudicated today.
Well, I definitely didn't mean to compliment ourselves. That legitimately was whose idea it was. It sounds like it was a morph based on a suggestion by a council member.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neill?
Sure. So first off, thank you very much, and thank you to Arts Commission for all the work. I have no suggestions for any changes of the pieces. I only have one question about a placement of one of them. For a long time now, we've had the white cage right out front, and that's been something that I think catches people's eyes when they, when they come in. And the one that we are proposing to put in its place is the fairly large steel one. And I'm wondering, was there any thought or consideration maybe to something a little more colorful or something that would catch someone's eye? Like, for example, burnt matchstick is 40 feet tall, and that's the only place in the park that's sunk down. And with the light, especially at night, I feel like that would be pretty amazing. And the other one, especially because I see so many young kids walking up that pathway, and it's kind of the entrance up, the balancing act one, I think I could see a lot of, especially, for example, my young daughter, balancing act, right, right there also as she, as they're entering into it. So I was just wondering, what was the thought process that went into the placement of that one? I'm curious, given that that's probably going to be seen by the absolute most people who come into our civic center.
It was a lot of give and take and discussion among the members of the judging panel during the walkabout, and there were multiple suitable locations for really most of the works. So it really was a subjective recommendation, and I think that with perhaps just a few exceptions, you know, the judging panel and the Arts Commission would feel comfortable, you know, placing burnt matchstick in an alternate location or the balancing act as well.
I hate to ask, Vice Chair Greer, would you mind weighing in? I'd love to hear from you on this also.
Well, of course, we support our consultants. However, Miriam Baker, who couldn't be here tonight, who's in Tajikistan, and Grace and I, we did like the location where Lakoshia fell, and that was our number-one choice. But they felt that in moving it over to the far side, near Avocado, that it would be less invasive in the view plane for those that live across the street and might receive less friction from the homeowners. So that's why we did, but we love the piece. We're so thrilled about it.
So your first choice was burnt matchstick for that location?
At Lakoshia, yes.
Okay.
The other two.
All right.
Thank you, Councilman Dixon.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to thank the Arts Commission, Arlene, and our new members, too. Thank you, and thank you, our consultants. And I was part of the council discussion a few years ago that said we needed more community involvement, and you came up with the idea of an online survey, and it was brilliant. And I feel so good that we've, I'm not an art expert, so I will defer to the committee, the public, to you who have selected these pieces. And I think it is becoming a real must-see point of our, place of our civic center for the children and other art, and just walking through to experience the pleasures and the beauty of our civic center Sculpture Garden. So thank you for your good work, and I'm, I love the process that you've embarked on now, and I think it's working and continue to get more community engagement. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you, Arlene, and please convey it back. Thank you.
Thank you, council, Mayor Proton Duffield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering why you wouldn't have considered a very classic, traditional Duffy boat out there. I mean, it can handle the weather. The kids love them. So we're open to that if you want to call me.
Okay, so at this time, if you don't want to sit down for a bit, we'll take public comments, and then we may call you right back up. There are new questions from the dais. Public comments on this item, please come forward. Buckle your seatbelts. This is the famous Barry.
I can, from Joe Lewis.
Barry, could you move the mic?
Knowing what I'm going to say.
Can you move the mic towards you? Could you move the microphone towards you?
Certainly will. I'll move it toward me so you can hear me, although I've never had any trouble having appeared in federal court many times, and no, any of you are lawyers. Now, the federal court judges are further away, you know, back there, and they're up there, and I've been heard without the microphone, but I'll keep my voice down. It's always nice to know that you were appreciated. I was not going to appear, but how could I resist the challenge? My reason for not appearing was that each time my comments on the so-called "art in the park" has resulted in total lost case for me. I appreciate that I have the time, but now I know some were listening, and I can't even claim agreement with my views. I at least have people who appreciate and accept somebody coming up here and saying something about art in the park that isn't bending over and saying, "God, this stuff is just wonderful. How lovely it is, and these artists are so talented. I just can't believe how untalented they are." Well, what they think is art is just not in agreement with my own tastes. Sculptures and art, other works of art that look like rocks and trees look like, don't do anything for me. You know, sculptures that are super great look a lot more like Rodin's sculptures. Go to his garden in Paris when you're there, and you'll see what sculptures are supposed to look like, done by people that are talented, not a bunch of people who are welders or steelworkers, which is some of these pieces of work are. You can even see the people standing next to it. Now, I must admit that the favorite selection by all the people about a popsicle stick was, if you like that, that's okay. That's art for Newport, it's good art for Newport Beach. So I got no complaints about it, but it's not art. It's just three popsicle sticks. The, the, there's a lot cute, a lot of cute playful things on trees and bunnies, and that's why the bunnies, people like them, because you know what? They look like bunnies, and that's why people like them. Kids like them. They get more activity than anything else. There's only one person that doesn't like them, and that's Scott, because they cost so much. But other than that, they're pretty nice. Burnt Matchstick, the artist thinks that is what it looks like. That's, he must have called it a burnt matchstick. I defy any of you to tell me that looks like a burnt matchstick. It don't look anything like a burnt matchstick. I appreciate that he has little talent to call it that. Anybody ever seen a matchstick knows it doesn't look like this. It's ugly. And the thing is, is the biggest problem is, it's 40 feet tall, and the light's going to shine right at my house. And that's the one thing that our neighborhood complains about, is the lights from the city hall. Boy, have I spent my time already?
Yeah, 30 more seconds if you like.
All right, all right. No Swimming, that's a good name for it, but I don't think a shark fin is very artistic. I like the Balancing Act. Cosmic Glints, I'd like to know, what's a glint? However, it's not scary, so that's pretty, pretty nice. And besides, retired councilman Tony Petros would probably like it, because it's made up of old bicycle rims. Cutting Your Bearings, this looks like what it's made of, junk. There's no further comment except to repeat myself and say, who says this is art? The artist is probably a good welder. But still, Be Still and No, what can I say? It's some pieces of rusty metal, I assume welded together. It looks like the art is still, so I won't get what it is, I don't get what it is. Does anybody get it? Does anybody get it? I don't get it. But I like this one. I really do like this one. The only thing I'm concerned about, and the lawyers on the panel should be concerned about the same thing, look very carefully about where it's located and how close the front of that bird is located to the, to a little opening where people can approach it. And we know how kids are. You know, kids jump around, and they run around and things like that. The beak on that thing is very sharp, very, very sharp, and it's the closest thing to the, to the, to the path. I think it should be moved back. But it's, other than that, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful item. It really is. Cultural pedestrians, I don't like it, but I will tell you this right now. If you look carefully at it, all the faces and hands and everything show this artist has got real talent. She can do faces, and she can do hands. I just don't like the presentation, but you know, it's, it's not bad. But all around, I just think that this is just another example of, you know, they're trying to educate us into thinking that we don't know what art is. Well, I got a whole lot of paintings in my house and a whole lot of drawings in my house. Many Scott Kennedys, I've got chagalls. I know what art is, and I know that this isn't art. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for allowing me more time.
Thank you, Sean. Never disappoint. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Maldune, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. First, I would like to suggest that I think Councilman O'Neill is on to something about the location of the matchstick, and I think it reveals that our consultants are more artists and engineers. If you think about it, the sight plane from Harborview Hills Homes is sloping down, they're looking down on the ocean, and the ground is sloping up, and I believe the matchstick would be less obtrusive, closer to MacArthur, and much more obtrusive at Avocado, and I think some of the Arts Commission And I think some of the arts commissioners agree that at the location at this corner up here by Avocado, it's also its impact is diminished by having actual palm trees next to it, of which it's a rather poor imitation. The main comment I wanted to make is that those who paid close attention to the last meeting that you had where you discussed this, actually, your April 11th meeting where you awarded the contract to Mr. Stein for overseeing this, would have somewhat surprisingly been expecting tonight that there would be a discussion about some what seems like the totally unrelated issue of relocating the city's Ronald Reagan Centennial Memorial to the Civic Center Park. But even more surprisingly than that, the staff report tonight tells us that Ronnie magically moved, apparently in the last week, without any public input or discussion that had been promised. I submitted some extensive written comments about that issue late this afternoon. I stand by those comments. I'm not going to repeat them tonight. The essence of it is that process by which the relocation happened stinks. It stunk from the beginning, and it stinks again tonight. But between your study session and evening session, I did go up the path to look at Ronnie and his new location next to the Bunny Henge. And I have to say, it's rather interesting that Ronnie, with his welcoming smile and his wave, seems to be saying to the public, "I'm Ronald Reagan, and I approve of bunnies, and I approve of $2 million bridges." And somehow, for your hero, that seems fitting. Thank you.
He's over there to watch over City Hall, so it doesn't happen again. Mr. Harp, do you want to respond to the public opportunity to comment on?
Just briefly, Mr. Mosher made a comment that the public didn't have a chance to have input regarding the relocation of the Ronald Reagan statue. And that's not the case. It did go to the Arts Commission several times, and they did form an ad hoc committee to look at it. However, they weren't able to come up with a recommendation for the city council. So there was an opportunity for public input, and that was at the Art Commission.
Thank you. Seen any other public comments? Yes, please come forward.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is George Schroeder, and I'm a 29-year resident of Newport Beach. I guess the main reason I came up here, I just wanted to thank the Arts Commission and all other people involved with this. And, you know, I will say that not all of this is like art I would choose, and there are like two pieces I don't like that much. But the bottom line is, these are temporary pieces. They're here for, I think, what, two years, and then they get cycled out. And we do have a lot of families coming here. I think the input from the public is good. I am up here a lot, and I do see young families here on the Green a lot, so I do appreciate some of those selections this year. Also, every time the arts come, I do enjoy my friend Barry Allen come up here, and I always like to hear what he has to say and take a knee against what we call "public art." That's always kind of fun. And then to what Councilman Duffy said, maybe someday we can incorporate a Duffy Boat. I thought, well, that might happen because they're doing found art, you know, with the bicycle wheels. We've had auto parts before, eventually, maybe. But then I thought, well, probably not, because nobody ever abandons a Duffy Boat. So it might not happen, but we can see what happens. Anyways, once again, I would just like to thank the Arts Commission, and I do think that if we just kind of don't overanalyze this, this isn't art for our own homes. And if we want to see Rodins, you can take the 405 freeway, you know, it's about an hour and a half, to the Getty Museum. They have fabulous art there. I would recommend my friend Barry go there about once a year, and I'm sure he'll see all kinds of fabulous art that he agrees with. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joy Brenner, and I wasn't planning to speak, but I just wanted to commend the council and the Arts Commission for really trying to bring some public opinions into the selection of the artwork. And I hope that in the future, maybe we can do, maybe even need a more widespread vote rather than just having one selection from the committee, to have more of the public input incorporated into perhaps voting on nine of them. And then, from those, we took the best nine out of all the votes. So anyway, but I really appreciate it, and I think it looks pretty interesting this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brenner. Any other public comments on this item? Seen on Councilman O'Neill?
Yeah, my thought, coming back to my questions on the burnt matchstick. If the concern is the view plane, it strikes me that the view plane actually is better off having the burnt matchstick down below. And then, actually, it's in the same view plane as the lights, the streetlights, which are actually a little bit higher. Because if I'm looking at the lights, if I'm looking at it correctly, burnt matchstick is taller than our palm trees. And so aesthetically, I think it'd look nicer from a view plane standpoint, and for Barry and his neighbors, I think it'd be better. Barry, you agree? I'm not sure what to say.
I don't think you want to open that one.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. I mean, my... Yeah, fair enough. So my... My thought process is if the justification is the view plane, to Jim's point, yeah, I tend to... Okay, all right. Thanks, Scott. I will do that. I move staff recommendation with the modification that burnt matchstick be switched with the piece that is proposed there now unless it gives heartburn to the Arts Commission. Does it? No? Okay, then that's my motion.
Tim, for Claire, would you put the map up, showing the aerial location, so that we understand what the motion is?
I do second that, by the way.
Caught it. Well, would you just tell us what's happening?
Sure. So the motion would be to approve the staff recommendation of all pieces, with the exception that burnt matchstick, which is at the bottom right, would be switched with Be Still and No, which is in the middle right.
Be Still and No is the one to the right of the shark fin?
No, I'm sorry. So burnt matchstick is at the bottom right. It's the... Yes, it's with a clicker on it right now. And then I would suggest switching it with that, because even though we're looking at a 2D map, the Be Still and No is substantially lower in the ground from a view plane standpoint and is also essentially in the same view plane as the corner there with the lights already there. So when this is lit up at night, it would not hopefully affect Barry certainly less than it would if it were in the present location.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Oh, I'd just like to say that art should always inspire a reaction and commentary. And so by Barry Allen's commentary and reaction tonight, I think we're off to a great start with this new session in the garden.
Councilwoman Dixon.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on the line of sight that we talk about to ask Tim or Arlene. Did we do any legitimate, not official engineering studies to really measure height and distance and go up to the residence and look and just see where, other than just looking at it from a subjective point of view? Did we really look at it? I'm not saying an engineering study, but did we look at it with some semblance of scale, positioning, and impact on neighbors?
Want to come up to the...
Why don't you come up to the microphone?
I believe Director Heatherton walked the site with the facilities management. Is that correct, Tim?
We walked the site with Maude and also with the consultants. And, you know, we feel that the selections that the Arts Commission made and that were in the recommendation tonight, we're done with an abundance of caution in order, you know, to keep everybody happy and not potentially cause an issue with the neighbors. But I'm just looking at the depth of... What am I trying to say? The height of MacArthur over the bottom of the Civic Center Park where the flagpoles are located is probably 60 feet. So you would probably have a 40-foot piece in a bowl that is that deep, that it would probably have a negligible effect on the neighbors. We felt that by putting it over by the sidewalk closer to the streetlights and the palms, that you couldn't really have the argument that it was obstructing a view plane because there's tall buildings across the street and other tall things. So the idea was to be really cautious and to negate the potential argument in terms of like a scientific answer or in terms of engineering. We didn't really do anything that formal. We just kind of eyeballed it and kind of went from the sensibility of like the aesthetics rather than, you know, anything that's real technical.
Well, may I make a suggestion? Maybe it's unnecessary. Certainly don't hire an engineering firm to come out and assess this, but maybe just like in home building where you kind of do some...
Story poles.
Yeah, you kind of do the rope or the string or some kind of... Get some boards up there just to kind of evaluate it so it's more than a gut reaction, just to see that we're not obstructing the view and this movement can work. I support the idea to move it, but I'd like to be a little bit more specific because we do have neighbor impacts, and that's a big issue in our community, just that we don't destroy or impact view planes. So just do something with string or rope or something to measure the height. Something to look a little bit more precisely without necessarily an engineering study. Okay, thanks.
May I make one comment, Councilman Dixon? There was one other thing you may want to consider, that if you're driving down MacArthur and you're looking at burnt matchstick, you'll only be seeing part of it. You'll only be seeing the upper half. So a significant amount of the sculpture might be cut off from the bottom at the waist, and it might affect the sight appropriateness of it in your view of it. Whereas the other side, everyone that sees it from MacArthur will see all of it, and everyone on this side looking at that direction will see all of it. But people coming down at MacArthur would only see a portion of it.
Okay, thank you. And they may get in a car accident in the process of looking. Well, they just drive in, and they could see it in their full splendor. Okay.
It's fine. I just wanted to let you know that so that you were not disappointed.
Wouldn't want everyone distracted. Okay.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously 6-0.
Sorry, Barry. Thank you. Okay, next item. Is there a request from the dais for a staff report on this?
So item 17 is relative to the City Clerk's Office Records Management Staffing. So, good morning, or good afternoon, evening. It's been a long day, mayor and council members. Tonight, I'll be highlighting the benefits the proposed staffing structure would have on the city's records management process. As the city's custodian of records, I know records are not as glamorous as maybe public safety or the budget or basically anything else in the city. But someone's got to do it, and that someone's my department. So as indicated in the staff report, the proposal is to convert the part-time record specialist to full-time and have a year-round part-time department assistant. So the top matrix is the current budget, and the bottom is my proposed budget. So as you can see, the staffing recommendation is cost-neutral and does not require a budget amendment. So why would I ask for a change? Well, my office has been handling the Increase in Public Records Act requests, or also known as PRARs or PRA requests, and records management demands basically utilizing maximum staffing. But the demands are simply outstripping my office's resources. So remember that records management isn't just PRA requests, although just last week we had over 40 of them turned into our office. So it's important to note that the request tally for my office does not include all the emails, phone calls, or even the public requests over the counter. And the graph doesn't reflect any assistance provided by my office to other departments. So in the long term, and at a minimum, the staffing proposal will assist the city to remain in compliance with our record retention schedule and the Public Records Act. So this is an example of a typical records request. The request is received. It sometimes needs clarification. It's cataloged, triaged, researched, compiled, redacted, reviewed, and produced. So my office could end up repeating this cycle upwards of 500 times a year. So if any of these steps are missed, it could result in litigation similar to the lawsuit a few years ago, which cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in attorney's fees. But some of the improvements my office has taken to be more transparent are: we've improved and implemented the request website, newportbeachca.gov/PRR. We've made more documents available online. We've increased the turnaround times for responsive documents. And our record staff has built a reputation of trustworthiness within internal and external customers. So the temporary staff that my office has hired were to assist with inventorying records from, think of it, from the past to the present. And they have completed Phase 1. We started out with three people, but now we're down to one person. The year-round department assistant would assist records management from the present to the future and, at a minimum, be the clerical support for the record specialist so that this person can use their time and expertise to focus on more technical aspects of records management. Phase 2 deals with our electronics records. And but for Phase 3, I strongly believe sustainable records management should be handled by consistent year-round staff. So in the long term, this could save $35,000 a year citywide because my goal is to have my department handle the administrative records management duties. So everything we've done and will do, we'll keep doing, but better. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Councilwoman Dixon. Okay, Councilman O'Neill.
Hey, Lonnie. One of the things that I was looking at is in Attachment B to the staff report, there had been the discussion, the difference between the current division position worksheet, which shows a FTE of 6.71, and the proposed, which brings it down to 6, and it's cost-neutral, and the only reason it's higher is because it's other benefits which come along with a full-time employee versus a part-time employee. Is that how you understood it as well?
Correct. And there's also some benefits with our temporary staff that I believe they had PARs benefits for the hours that they were working.
Okay. And so when we're looking at the difference between the two, and I mean technically, we're bringing the FTE down slightly, but what you're saying is by doing that, and of course, bringing in a full-time employee, bringing in the benefits as well, that will be sufficient, at least it will be better than what you have now? Is that how I understand it?
Yes, yeah.
Significantly?
Yes, because the work that... For the PRARs and to do records management, having that full-time employee is of great help. He's already, well, the person filling that position at this time, he's already doing a great deal of work to help us get out of this hole that we've been in as far as the quantity and voluminous requests that we've received. And then the department assistant at least will be a consistent person to work with the record specialist.
Okay. And I'll just note real quickly for the general public, on our website, if you go to the Public Records Request website, you'll actually be able to see all of the public records requests that have been made going back years, which I actually have to say thank you to Mr. Mosher for letting us know about that. I recall him mentioning that. It's one of my favorite websites now. And then the other thing that I'll mention is that, you know, I appreciate the effort on this. I know the number of PRARs have increased pretty dramatically. So since we had a somewhat similar discussion with our city attorney's office, and we brought in and asked our city manager, because it is your department, and I certainly appreciate that. But at the end of the day, one of the things that we have to work with is our city manager on overall budget. I'd have to ask... I'd have to ask, Dave, do you have input or thoughts on this presentation?
I think watching the City Clerk's Office and how difficult it's been to manage public records, again, through no fault of their own, just the overwhelming number, I think the request that Ms. Brown is making is an appropriate one. I think the dollars seem to be appropriate the way that's been presented. So she knows her office quite well. I think the person who's been working in that part-time role is very competent. He has very good skills in this regard, so it'd be a shame to lose him.
Okay, I have no further comment.
Councilman Pieter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Lonnie, I just want to take the time also, thank you for really spearheading this. I know that when we had our PRAR lawsuit, and we ended up writing a big check, and one of the things we tried to drive home to you and your department is that you need to stand on top of this, and need to be proactive on it. You need to come up with systems that are as automated as possible, and I start to see a lot of these things coming out, including the website that Will mentioned. So I want to encourage you to keep at it, keep it automated, keep it systemized. I know that the move impacted us somewhat, and that you're finally getting out of that hole and catching up with a lot of the paper records that are still in boxes in the corner. So keep up the good work, but don't stop. Thanks.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item?
My name is Barry Allen, and I have significant experience in representing the county in failure to produce documents when I was a practicing attorney in response to these Public Records Acts. I can only tell you that the courts don't give a damn about how much time and expense it takes you as a city or a county or any governmental agency to do this. They don't care. You have to produce them, or else you're going to end up paying the attorney's fees. So if she says she needs one person, I give her three people, because you get one case, that'll wipe out, that'll wipe out all the money that's going to be, just one case when you fail to produce documents. And if the guy has to spend time, and all of a sudden he goes to court and he says to the judge, "I had to spend hours doing this, and now we find out that they didn't produce this, and they didn't produce this," all of a sudden, the judge comes down on you like 10, they say, "You know, you didn't produce this stuff. Didn't produce this stuff. It's your job to get this stuff to them." When they make a records act, they made it very clear. I'm only mentioning that because it seems like she's asking for some minimal changes, and I think she probably ought to ask for two more people just to work on Public Records Act requests.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Maldune, members of the council. My name is, you know, is Jim Mosher, and I would second the spirit of Barry's comment, but I too am puzzled by Attachment B, and I think if Barry had seen this, would be quite confused, that the request doesn't seem to be to add employees, but to reduce them. Attachment B is returning, referring to FTE, Full-Time Equivalent Employees, and I take it a full-time equivalent employee of one is kind of a shorthand for devoting 40 hours a week to some task. And this shows we currently have 6.7 full-time equivalent employees, which is some number of hours devoted to this overwhelmed department, and after the change that's being requested, instead of 6.7, you'll have 6.0. If you have more work and less people, and the work is devoted to the Public Records Act request fulfillment, there must be something in the department that is at the short end of the stick, losing attention, and I'm wondering what is losing that will allow less people to do more work on Public Records Act requests? Thank you.
Jim, I think you'd be a great guy for us to hire, because while you're doing the work, you could find the information you're requesting as well.
Most definitely. Let me clarify, one of those, well, some of those positions in the current budget are temporary positions and are scheduled to, one in here, part-time, similar to what the temporary person is doing, but this would be a year-round permanent person, so that there'd be consistency with records management.
That alleviate your concern? Any other public comments on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk? Back to you again. Oh, that's right, I need to vote on the item, I'm sorry. Let's vote on the item.
I'll move, I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Thank you. A little lapse there.
Councilmember Pieter, thank you, and I appreciate it. The motion carries unanimously six-zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Again?
Oh, I left my agenda over. Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting, may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Thank you. Any motions to reconsider? I see none. We are adjourned.